Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is the November 29th, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting in Lakeville, also acting as Wage and Personnel Board. From a remote location, in accordance with the provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the November 29th, 2021 Public Meeting of the Board of Selectmen will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/LakeCam. And you should not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecom.tv. So we are running a little bit late. But the first item on our agenda is to go into executive session. So I will entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically healthcare with the laborers, police and firefighter unions. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chairman so declares, and I do declare, and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the police chief, and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22F, approval of executive session minutes for February 17th, 2021, and August 9th, 2021, and to return to open session.
I'm moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I would suggest you notify the public, we won't be back till at least 6:30. You know, because we do have that classification hearing, we can't change that time.
Yep, so we will be back before 6:00, I mean by 6:30, the latest. And then we have the tax classification hearing at 6:30. So all those in favor of going to executive session?
Carbone, I.
LaCamera, I.
Baby, and I. All right, so we are back in our regular meeting. Just for anyone who's joining us now, we started our meeting a little bit late. We went right away into executive session. And now we are starting our 6:30 PM tax classification hearing. So I'm going to read the notice of hearing. The Board of Selectmen, in compliance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 56, as amended, will conduct a public hearing to determine the percentage of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real property and personal property for fiscal year 2022 on Monday, November 29th, 2021, at 6:30 PM. In accordance with provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the November 29th, 2021 Public Meeting of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/LakeCam. You should not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. Meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecom.tv. Signed of Agilia Fabian Chair, Rich LaCamera Selectman, Lorraine Carbone Selectman, November 11th, 2021, posted in the Middle Borough Gazette. So I will entertain a motion to open the FY22 Tax Rate Classification Hearing.
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Carbone, I.
LaCamera, I.
Baby, and I. All right. So I know we have John Oliveri, Chairman of the Board of Assessors, with us. We have Harald Shid, Assessor, and David Golden, Assessor. So do you have anyone else, John? Do you need to open a meeting? Do you need to?
No, it's just myself and Harald and David, both with RR, who handle the principal assessing services for the town of Lakeville. So I get to do very little speaking tonight, fortunately for me and probably everyone else. So I'm going to turn it over to Harald, when he's going to deliver the findings, his presentation, and then I will comment on boards. We did, we did, we do have a recommendation, so which way to go going forward. So Harald?
You're unmuted.
You're muted, Harald.
Harald, you're muted. Is that better? Yes. So thank you, John, and thank you to the Select Board, Town of Lakeville. This is our annual classification hearing comes as the culmination of a lot of activities that take place in the Assessors' Office throughout the year. More recently, we finalized our valuations and received Department of Revenue approval of those valuations. I'll ask David just very quickly to give you just a quick indication of where those values are traveling. We also have our new growth revenue certified. And with value approval and new growth certifications were allowed to hold this hearing. It's probably one of the shortest of all the hearings that you have. And short, because we think the conclusion is probably going to be the same as it has been in each of the many, well, in all the past years. The point of this hearing is simply to ask the question, should the town levy one tax rate against all classes of property? Or alternatively, split the rate to yield a higher commercial rate that would offer a reduction in residential taxes? For reasons we'll point to in a few moments. And with a board recommendation, you'll find that we'll be advising against splitting the rate. But moving forward, as we have in the past with a single rate. Do you all have the document, the classification hearing document in front of you? This was prepared by my colleague, David Golden, joins us tonight. And I'm going to bring it up as well. And we'll pass from the introduction to the terminology, but actually more, more to the point, towards the bottom of the page, you'll see that we're looking to raise $27,82,452 through property taxation. That, of course, doesn't fully fund the town's budget, that budget having been approved by town meeting some months ago. But it does represent a sizable percentage of the revenue that the town brings in to fund the annual budget. That levy is up a bit from last year. It levy always does increase. And I can now direct your attention to the section Valuations by Class. You'll see that residential properties by far make up the largest percentage of the assessment base, roughly 87.5%. Where the rest of the properties, including commercial, industrial, and personal property, make up about 12.5% of the assessment base. That dynamic tells us that it takes about a 7% increase in the commercial industrial tax rate to yield a 1% residential tax rate reduction. And it's for that reason that the Board of Assessors, and they actually took a vote the other day, to recommend to you, the Select Board, that we adopt a single tax, that you adopt a single tax rate. We are forecasting that new fiscal year 2022 rate to come in at about $12.07 per thousand of value. We say we estimate, because until the Department of Revenue completes their review of all of the financials and other information provided them, we could land on a tax rate that might vary a penny or two. Right now, we're looking at $12.07 per thousand. That represents a tax rate reduction. But we need to also convey in this presentation that property values are increasing. And David, can you just briefly comment on where we're seeing values for single-family homes and even condominiums travel relative to, say, commercial property values?
Yeah, of course. Thank you for allowing me to join your meeting tonight. As Harald mentioned, we've done quite a bit of legwork to get to where we are today. Part of that included a review of all sales that have occurred in the town of Lakeville. When looking at those sales, and particularly the sales that are considered valid by the Department of Revenue, we've noticed that the, and this shouldn't come as a surprise to anyone here, who pays attention at all to the real estate market, that residential values have increased considerably, and to the tune of about 9%. And so we've seen tremendous growth there, as well as some decent growth in other classifications of property. But by far, the single-family properties have grown the most, seconded by condo growth, and particularly in Lakeville, with the number of new condos coming online, and followed by the other classifications of property.
Can I comment also? Thanks, David. Let me comment as well that valuations, assessed valuations lag behind the current market. The base here, from which we drew our sales for analysis, is calendar year 2020. We really, we're really going to see a stark increase next year when we consider what happened in calendar year 2021, and just the surge in property values that occurred in 2021. But those don't get translated into assessed values until next fiscal year. So we have still at 9% a strong increase in property values. But those values are destined to go up a whole lot more next year. That being said, we try to moderate the actual tax burden by reducing the tax rate. Still, it all comes down to what the residents vote in the way of a budget, and what it takes in the way of property tax revenue to help fund that budget. You'll see, under the Tax Impact section, that we're forecasting, on average, about a $258 increase in property taxes for this fiscal year. And that represents about a 5% increase. We then, I then offer for you a shift factor motion that could be read into the record. And this motion would effectively yield a single tax rate. John, did you want to offer up any comments?
No, I think the presentation was very well done. And as you had alluded to, we did take a vote at our last board meeting. And based on the significant increase that would have to take place on the commercial side, it is the board's recommendation that we do keep the single tax rate in place for the town of Lakeville.
Okay. Thank you for all that. I don't see any questions in the chat. Do any of the selectmen have questions?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, so.
Rich looks like he's talking.
I was talking to myself, yes. So I understand that Harald, or John, are we saying that the average valuation went up 9%? Am I understanding that?
On the residential, single-family dwellings, yes, 9%. I'm trying to recall, maybe David, you have a sense of where condo values have traveled. I think they're roughly approximate to the single families, somewhere in the ballpark of 8% or 9%.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. My next question is that, you know, some of these houses, especially new houses, and turnover existing houses, there's significant increase in value for those houses. How did you handle a new sale or an existing sale from an existing property?
Well, the valuation process starts by looking at a body of sales. And again, we're drawing from calendar year 2020. We look at our standing assessments and how they compare with those sale prices to yield what we call an assessment-to-sale ratio for each of those sold properties. What you'll find is that when we took those early measurements, we were overall coming in at about an 86%, 86, 87% assessment-to-sale ratio. Clearly, we had to move valuations up. Department of Revenue requires that our assessments approximate overall the market as represented by those sales, that we should be closer to 100%. Historically, we've tried to target our assessment level at somewhere around 95%. That's still acceptable by the Department of Revenue. I think, given what we're going to see next year, we aim for a bit higher assessment level. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, David, it's been a couple of weeks since I've looked at the numbers. But I think we're approaching 98, 99% assessment level. Yeah, so. So the lift in values overall, and mind you, when we talk averages or even medians, they point to kind of a middle point. Averages, as we all know, are made up of highs and lows and everything in between. So you would find, if you looked at those 2020 sales, that actually some assessments are even a bit over sale price. And then, of course, some are, some number are under a sale price. But we also look for any assessment bias. Maybe this gets to your question, Rich. When we look at those assessment-to-sale ratios, we cut that data a number of ways to look at whether, for example, higher-end properties are over or under assessed relative to lower-end properties. And where we detect that, those patterns, we go to our underlying land and building tables and make appropriate adjustments to get our values to an equitable standing.
So I guess my question is that, further question for next year, is there's a significant number of properties that are under assessed right now? Does that mean they're going to be brought up to the market? Great.
So we'll go through this exercise again next year. I think we're probably looking at upwards of, as I recall, somewhere around 18% to 20% valuation increases next year. That to bring values up to the 2021 market.
And that means that, that means that the, oh, what happened there?
No, I think that's Ari. Ari, are you sharing something?
Liberally, sorry.
Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. So that means that the tax rate will go down significantly as well.
Yes, it will.
Okay, so in looking at the ratio between, you're saying the average valuation's gone from 404 to 449, and it's going to be a tax increase of $258, which is a 5% increase of the previous year for that particular valuation. The tax rate, you know, has gone down by 650, 50%? It's gone down from 1277 to 1207?
Yeah.
I don't think that's 50%. I don't know what that differential is.
Excuse me, roughly 5%, not 50. So they didn't offset each other, then?
No, so the reality, of course, in all of this is, the more money you have to raise, the higher ultimately the tax bill that people will see when they open up their January bill.
Yeah, but we always pay, we always spend up to the tax levy anyways. So that's, that isn't a change. You know, what the change is here is the valuations, you know, of the properties themselves, which is
Right.
Had an effect here.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
We do have a, we do have another hearing scheduled. So I don't want to move this along too quickly, but we do have a question on the Proposition 2.5. I don't know, Harald, do you want to explain it? But pretty much last year's tax base gets, the levy last year gets taxed, gets increased by 2.5%. And then to that figure, we add in new growth. We add in bonds and everything else. So in the end, your increase in taxes may not necessarily be just 2.5%. But everything we do is approved by the Department of Revenue, correct?
Well, it is. And it's also approved by the voters of the town of Lakeville at their annual town meeting. So there's, there are a lot of hands in the making of these tax levies and tax rates.
Okay. All right. So any more questions, Rich?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. So if Lorraine, you don't have any other or anyone else, then I will step down from, well, no, you know what? I will entertain a motion that the Lakeville Board of Selectmen votes in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, as amended, the percentage of local tax levy, which will be borne by each class of real and personal property, relative to setting the fiscal year 2022 tax rates, and set the residential factor at 1, with a corresponding CIP shift of 1, pending approval of the town's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
I'm moved.
Second.
Any discussion? And pretty much what all that means is, we have one tax rate. One residential and commercial all pay the same rate. Okay, any discussion, anything else? All those in favor?
Carbone, I.
LaCamera, I.
Fabian, I. Thank you to the assessors for their work. I know from being on the Board of Assessors for several years, that so much goes into this. And it's, you know, a long process. So thank you to everyone for all that work there. All right.
And thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right. So I know we're a little late for our 6:45 hearing meeting with the Cable Television Advisory Committee. But here we go. So I am going to read the legal notice into the record. Town of Lakeville Cable Television Renewal with Comcast, the Town of Lakeville Board of Selectmen, acting as the cable television licensing authority, as cable tele- The Town of Lakeville Board of Selectmen, acting as the cable television licensing authority. Is that correct? Did I see it? Okay. All right. Under Mass General Law 166A, Section 1, and/or its designated cable advisory committee will hold a public hearing to consider final action, including possible approval of the proposed Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC license with the town of Lakeville. Said hearing will take place remotely on November 29th, 2021, at 6:45 PM. Copies of the proposed license are available for inspection at the office of the town clerk. For more information on the public hearing, please call the Board of Selectmen's office, 508-946-8803. In accordance with provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the November 29th, 2021 Public Meeting of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/LakeCam. And the meeting will also be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date, www.lakecom.tv, by order of the Board of Selectmen, as license issuing authority of Agilia Fabian, Richard LaCamera, Lorraine Carbone, November 18th, 2021. I will entertain a motion to open-
Madam Chair, can I interrupt you a second, please? I'm sorry to do this, but we didn't close the hearing on the tax-
Oh, I'm so sorry. Well, can we open this right now, and then we can close that? Do we?
I would close the other hearing first.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to close the tax classification hearing.
I'm moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carbone, I.
LaCamera, I.
Baby, and I. No, no, I, thank you for reminding me, Rich. I totally forgot. I think my schedule was a little ambitious this evening, duly noted. So I will entertain a motion, did someone say something? Okay, I will entertain a motion to open the hearing with the Cable Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carbone, I.
LaCamera, I.
Fabian, I. Okay. All right. So I will now ask if the, I see Mr. Robert Marshall. Do you need to open your meeting?
Yes, yes, I think we do. There's some question in my mind, is whether I need to read that state verbiage. I was told last week that probably not. But on other-
I don't think so. I think we just read it in the, in the hearing notice.
Right. I like to call the meeting of the Cable Advisory Committee to order, and first call the role, Tom Serrignano.
Here.
Walter Healy. I know he's here. He was here.
He was here.
You're muted.
Walter, Walter, you have to unmute. There you go. Okay. And Bob Marshall's here. Fred, I don't think could make it. Should I begin, Madam Chair?
Yes, please do. Yes, please do.
Okay, uh, the cable industry and their technologies are in a huge state of flux, which makes negotiating with them quite challenging. Our negotiations were long and arduous, really more than two years, which is unusual, uh, for us. Uh, and much of those negotiations involved just maintaining the status quo uh, in protective language. Uh, as in any negotiation, we gained some and we lost some. Uh, we'll start with, uh, the things that we gained, we think are improvements. First of all, the, uh, we were able to increase the gross annual revenues from what was actually is right now, a four percent, uh, gross annual revenue from Comcast to a four point seven five percent. And, um, uh, the maximum that can be, uh, given to a town is five percent. Uh, I feel that this is especially important to get this increase uh, because for many years now, our newspapers have been unable to consistently and adequately cover meetings in town. Uh, not like the old days, even ten, fifteen years ago, when they were able to. Uh, and these funds will help residents remain informed, thanks to Lakcam and, uh, Jose's Invencio's, uh, great work. Uh, so that's, that's one thing that was a, a, a plus in all of this. Uh, by the way, I just, uh, remembered that I forgot to introduce our cable attorney, Bill August. He's, he's there um, as well. Second item that is a gain, um, I think, uh, is the so-called level playing field language, Section two point three in the, um, the, uh, proposed license. Uh, it's better and simpler than the expanded and more complicated Comcast language that, that they wanted. Uh, much time was spent trying to clarify this language back and forth and, and so forth. And this level of playing field language really does cut both ways. Uh, it can be a benefit for the cable companies and also for the town. Uh, but again, we got better language than what had been proposed, uh, by Comcast. Uh, the next, um, positive or gain was that we, and it's going to take a little while for this channel to kick in. We have a new, uh, will have a new H D channel in addition to our, uh, three regular standard definition channels uh, that will, all of these four channels will ultimately be, uh, on Lakcam. And the encoders, the equipment necessary to have these, uh, will be paid for by Lakcam and repaired, maintained, and replaced if needed by Comcast. So that's, that's, that's a real plus. Uh, we feel that this is a strong section, uh, for local origination from remote sites and, uh, where we added that Comcast not only needs to repair and maintain, but also replace if needed. And again, this will allow for more and better channel clarity, especially with the H D channel, the high definition. Uh, and it also commits Comcast to a full maintenance obligation to help keep Lakcam channels operational and at optimum, uh, levels. Uh, another gain was the so-called, uh, senior discount, um, language. And unfortunately, Comcast will no longer allow such language to be included in the license itself, but they will agree to a side letter, which we, which we have the language for, um, and will be executed. Uh, and this discount has been somewhat expanded, uh, from what it had been. So there have been some im- improvements. One of the things that, that's very unfortunate, it's not only with Comcast, but also with Verizon. Uh, but Comcast has not allowed any senior discount language to be included in any license uh, any recently. And despite our efforts, and believe me, we spent a lot of time on this, uh, such a, uh, discount was not agreed to, Comcast wouldn't agree. And both cable companies, whatever language they've ever had for senior discounts, has, in my opinion, been very meager when you consider the, uh, the size of the corporation and the money that they make. Uh, another positive was Comcast is a ten-year license versus Verizon, who in the past at least, has only offered a five-year license. So that gives us some certainty for a longer period of time. Um, and many of our gains, and I alluded to this earlier, many of our gains involve avoiding potentially negative language uh, that Comcast wanted in some of the articles in the proposed license. So that pretty much covers the gains. Uh, does anyone have a question before I go on to, um, some of what we might call the losses? Okay, uh, the free basic drops, as, as many of you know, uh, in years past, cable companies have allowed for a free drop at a municipal location, town hall, library, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and we were told at the bargaining table that Comcast will no longer write free drops into any license in the country. Um, however, this may not actually be considered a loss, because based, I did a, a survey of, of every department in the town that I could get ahold of and spoke to somebody in the department um, and asked, you know, do you use this? And almost every single one said, we don't use the basic drop anymore. We pay for a little bit more, and I might be out of a, let's say it's a fire department, for example. They, they might take up a collection and, and bump that up to a, a higher rate of service, so. Um, almost no department was using this, so it's, it's not as much of a loss as we might see it as. Um, okay, oh, it, it should be noted that this quote-unquote "loss" was impacted by an FCC ruling, uh, in the not-so-distant past uh, which could allow a cable company to not pay us as much as they otherwise would. Because if the amount of money they pay in gross annual revenues to the town exceeds five percent, then they can reduce that amount above five percent from what they, they pay to us. So it's, it's not quite as bad as, as we might see it. Uh, the next item, we wanted to have some sort of a, an electronic, uh, channel guide. Um, and we were unsuccessful in getting that. Our thoughts being that if you, um, could see what was actually posted, um, on the Lakcam channels right there on your guide, it would be much easier for people to find the programming that they were looking for. But again, Comcast would not hear of it. Um, customer service office, we spent a great deal of time talking about the location of this office. Uh, many of us remember years ago that that office was in Middleborough, where the old Comcast studio was. Um, and then they moved it and, and actually paid us some money, if you recall. Um, I think it might have been fifty thousand dollars, uh, went to the town for us to give them permission to move it to Rainham. Now, we spent a lot of time on this issue, because I was concerned, uh, I, we were concerned that, um, Comcast might move it to East Overture. And, and or we might have to, uh, if we want to turn our equipment in, might have to mail it and wait for it to come back if we're getting new equipment, et cetera, et cetera. So we spent a lot of time, and I was given assurances, uh, by the Comcast rep, that Comcast has no intention of moving, um, their current customer service office anywhere other than, than Rainham. So while we didn't get it, um, put in town, uh, as far as we know, it's not going to be moving. And it, the language in the license is that it has to be, uh, in a town. Um, oh gosh, I forgot the actual wording here. Uh, in a town reasonably convenient to Lakeville, so even if they were to move it, it would have to, uh, meet those standards. Um, that's really if, uh, gains and losses, but I have a few words I'd like to say. Uh, I'd like to say thank you, first of all, to Bill August, our cable attorney, uh, who helped us navigate uh, through some difficult passages, uh, in our little journey for the last couple of years. I, I'd also like to say thank you to Lakcam's, uh, executive director, Jose Invencio, who, while he was not part of our committee, attended, uh, all of our negotiating sessions, because he has a wealth of technical knowledge, uh, that we, uh, drew on, uh, just about, uh, at, at every meeting. So it was, uh, great value having Jose there. Um, speaking of Lakcam, uh, much of what we negotiated helps Lakcam do a better job. One that has become far more important today than it has ever been. As I said earlier, twenty years ago, fifteen years ago, we had multiple newspapers covering multiple meetings in town. That pretty much is not so anymore, of course. We now have, uh, the remote meetings and so forth, and that does impact it, but even prior to that, that was no longer the case. So the, the funding that we've had coming in, that it goes to Lakcam and so forth, allows the, the citizens of, of Lakeville to be informed. Without that, I don't know how the citizens would remain as well-informed as they do. So, uh, I, I thought that was important to, uh, to mention. I especially want to thank all of the members of the Cable Advisory Committee, Walter Healy, Tom Serrignano, and Fred, who was not here tonight, for hanging in there during some, uh, rather frustrating times at the bargaining table. Bargaining with a company the size of, uh, Comcast and even Verizon, to that matter, uh, can be frustrating and intimidating, but each member in his own way helped us reach this final agreement, which we feel, and we voted, that this is the best that we can do at this time. So we recommend, uh, that we, that you sign it. Uh, we'd like to thank you, the selectman, or the, pardon me, the select board, and, uh, Ari and Tracy, that, that over many years has been a great help. Uh, and all of the citizens for your help and patience with us in this process. Uh, I'm, I'm sure there were many times you were wondering, what the heck is happening, um, at the bargaining table? And this is, uh, all of that come to fruition. So, um, it lasted longer than we thought it would, and now we recommend that you sign it, and then after that, um, we must address the Verizon uh, license, uh, no rest for the weary, and that's pretty much it for me. If we have any questions?
Um, all right, thank you to Mister Marshall, um.
Madam Chair, I think Tom has something he wants to say.
Okay.
With the free drops, didn't Comcast express the opinion that he has no intention of discontinuing any better actually being used or charging for the basic service?
Madam Chair, if I may, uh, yeah, yeah, that he, um, Mike did suggest that that would uh, possibly be the case. But remember, those decisions get made above his pay grade. He did say that he, he didn't think that that would occur. Um, but that's not something on which we can really rely.
Okay, um, does anyone else from the, um, uh, Cable Advisory Committee have anything they want to add?
I think, I think I'd just like to add that Bob Marshall has worked his tail off. I mean, we've all done something, but-
It's, it's a team effort.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so at this time, is there any public comment? Um, I don't see anything on-
Uh, Jose has something he wants to say.
Okay. I would just like to, to mention to the public that this is a volunteer, um, committee, and they put in a lot of time on, on these negotiations, and Lakcam really appreciates that they, what they do. Um, thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, Jose.
Thanks, Jose.
Um, so if that's it for comments, then I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I'm off.
You wanna?
Madam Chair, I think Bill has something to say.
Um, okay, Bill?
Briefly, um, I, uh, am in agreement with, uh, uh, Bob Marshall's overview and, uh, his, uh, identifying the areas where we made substantial progress. I do want to point out that with respect to the very few areas where we did not get what we would have liked to, uh, one of the, uh, items was, uh, an electronic program guide listings of the individual, uh, Lakcam channels. No town in New England, uh, has ever obtained that, uh, from, uh, Comcast. They think that is just something beyond their capability to have daily updating of programming listings from local studios. They're changing on a di- So even though that is not on the, uh, the win list, uh, are not getting it, uh, does not reflect, uh, any inability to obtain anything that was obtained by any other town. No other town has, has obtained that. I just wanted to put that in perspective.
Thank you. No, thank you for that information. Okay.
I also just want to concur in thanking, uh, the team, the committee, and, and Bob Marshall in particular. They were phenomenal, uh, at every twist and turn. Uh, Bob had an update memo reporting on, uh, verbiage changes, of which there were many, you can imagine, coming from Comcast's legal department. It's very organized and thorough, all volunteer effort. Uh, so I thank the committee for making my life a lot easier by being so on top of this. They did a great job. And likewise, everyone in the, uh, town offices, whenever we needed some feedback or, uh, uh, counsel, uh, the, the town officials were there at every turn also. So thank you, uh, Lakeville, job well done. And I'm very confident this is a robust, strong license. The, uh, going from four percent to four point seven five percent of gross revenues is a very substantial uh, improvement. Going from three pegged channels to a fourth, which is H D, is something very few Massachusetts towns have, so we're really at the cutting edge of that. And that's even more of a victory than this committee is aware, because Comcast has already announced they don't want to do that in future towns. They want to make the H D one of the existing three rather than a fourth. So we, we pushed the envelope and where there was a big success.
All right, thank you. All right, so I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I'm moved.
Rich, you're muted.
Do you need to vote to, uh, sign the, the new, the agreement?
Um, yes, but we close the hearing first, and then the selectmen will discuss. So, um, you want a second that, Rich?
Yeah, second, thank you.
Okay, any discussion on closing the hearing? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Look camera, I.
Fabian, I. All right, so now, um, we have the recommendation from the Cable Committee members. Um, so as a Board of Selectmen, does anyone have any comments on, on anything that's been presented to us?
I think you did a very thorough job, everything, um, it's a lot to re- I think you did a very thorough job. Everything um, it's a lot to read, but um. So I liked your synopsis. I broke it right down, right to the nitty gritty. So I appreciate that. And thank you all for um, the commitment that you put in to getting this document uh drafted.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Yeah, I I I agree with that, Bob. This was very helpful, um, your summary here. So um, and also, you know, I'd like to thank all these same people. Um, again, you know, this is a bunch of volunteers and it's, you know, some some really good work here. Um, Rich, anything from you?
No, same thing. You know, I know, uh, I've talked to Bob many times about it, so I know how much work he put into it, so.
Yeah, Ari?
Not to belabor the point, but I just felt like I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, you know, but I've I've only been here about six months now and Bob um took uh took uh made the point of reaching out to me very early on, give me a sense of what was going on. He's coming very much in the loop through the whole process, um, more than he really had to, and I appreciated that. Um, and I just want to just just want to, you know, just to how impressed I am by his by dedication and attention to uh really, it was really force of will that got this thing across the finish line before the end of the of the calendar year, and that was really thanks to Bob.
Yeah.
Well, it it was it was thanks to the team. No, no question about it. It was the team. Because there was some times when I was a little far out there and they reeled me back in.
All right, so um, uh does someone want to make this motion that's been supplied to us? If uh we're in favor, if someone wanna?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Um, I'd just like to include the end date um of the January twenty second to two thousand thirty-two, which really seems pretty far off. But it's a ten-year contract, correct?
Right.
All right, so I move that the Board of Selectmen is issuing authority for the town. Vote to accept and approve the renewal license agreement with Comcast effective January twenty-third, um, two thousand twenty-two um, to January twenty, January twenty-second at two thousand thirty-two and execute their renewal license.
Second.
All right, um, just to make sure we don't have to read all that, correct? Bill?
Read all of what, Leah?
The whole, well, it's almost like three paragraphs here.
I I would read the preliminary paragraph for this reason. There's a paragraph about finding uh it not just approving the license, but there's a paragraph about finding that the cable company's proposal is responsive to the town. The reason we need that is the state has a regulation that when we file the license with the state, in addition to reporting the approval, we're supposed to state a reason for it. So we have a very general reason in the vote. So then the statement of approval will include a statement of a reason. Sorry.
That's okay. All right. So Lorraine, do you want to redo for me?
So I'm assuming that we can just add that to the end of my motion?
Yes.
Read that into it. Okay, so um, I'm going to uh readjust my motion. So ending where execute the renewal license, period. Finding that the cable franchise renewal proposal of Comcast reasonably meets the franchise and cable-related renewal needs and interests of the public in the town and finding that Comcast's financial and technical qualifications and local programming channels, facilities and services are reasonable to meet town cable franchise needs. And in accordance with the recommendation of the Town of Lakeville Cable Advisory Committee in favor of approval of the Lakeville Comcast renewal license.
Okay. Um.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Other than to say thank you to everyone again, um, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Alakem, I.
Fabian, I. Huge amount of work. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Leah. Uh, one one quick thing, just to bring you up to date. Our plan is to maybe take a a month off till after the holidays and then pick up with Verizon after that. And by the way, if anybody wants to join us in our fun, we'd be happy to have you on the committee. Thank you very much.
Okay.
You ready to call, Bob? You need to close our meeting?
Yep, uh, we need you to close out your meeting. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Walter. See what I mean? I'd be no place without these guys. Um, okay, I'll entertain a motion to uh close our meeting.
So.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor? Uh, Tom?
I.
Walter?
I.
And Marshall, I. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Adios.
Have a good evening, everybody. Have a good holiday.
Happy holidays, all.
Okay, so uh where are we? Um. We are at number four, meet with Master Plan Implementation Committee to discuss a possible vote to approve the Master Plan Implementation Matrix. So um, this is coming back to us from some changes that we asked to have made and um I believe that the Master Plan Implementation Committee voted unanimously unanimously to approve the revision submitted by Town Administrator Ari Sky on the attached Master Plan Implementation Chart. Um, on behalf of the MPIC, I would like to request the Board of Selecting Review to approve the implementation chart. So this is coming from the Master Plan.
Um, sure.
Committee, yep.
I believe the NPIC had a scheduled meeting uh for this time as well, so I'm thinking to.
Um, yep, so if they want to open their meeting. Uh, okay, all right, let's do that.
Okay, so in accordance with the provisions allowed by chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty-one, the November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one public meeting of the Master Plan Implementation Committee will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com backslash lakecam. And you do not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at lakecam.tv. So we have four agenda items this evening, the first being meet with the Board of Selectmen to discuss the Master Plan Implementation uh chart. Review and vote to improve the meeting minutes for September fifteenth and October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one respectively. The next meeting to be scheduled for December twenty-first and then any other business. So we will kick it off with a meeting with the the Board of Selectmen to discuss the Master Plan Implementation Chart, those changes that were made. And um, so we made some changes with Ari Sky and those changes were noted and forwarded to the Board for review and approval. We've been uh anxious to get this approved at your level so we can get it published and in the hands of the public and with the committees that are affected by the master plan.
Okay. Um, so I know some of the changes were um just uh responsibilities that belong to different staffing positions. Um, but I think they were just I don't know if there were, I don't recall anything big, but I don't remember the last time. It's it's been a few months since we did this. Um, does any of the selectmen have questions on the way the document reads right now?
Oh, I have no questions.
Okay.
I have a number of questions, sorry.
Okay, no, that's okay.
Rodney, and looking at the first page there, you know, it talks about uh large use strategy and it says it's done. Okay, um, does that mean then the um the chapter forty-three D requirement for any of those properties is not going to be addressed or not?
Great question. Uh.
It has to be, by the way, you know, I don't think it's necessary, but that's my opinion, but.
I appreciate it. Re- Rita, are you online? Okay, um, I'm gonna have to defer on that, uh, Rich. But yes, if it's if it's in there and it's stated, then that's what it is. Um.
Nope, but it says the task is done, so I just want to make sure.
Having a little bit of trouble.
That's fine.
No, that's okay. I can't answer it this time, but uh Rita, are you on? No, it's like, it looks like uh Rita Garbert is not on this evening. Hi, Rita. Sorry about that. Can I defer to you on the on the question from uh Rich LaCamera, please?
Rich, do you mean that uh I believe the forty-three D was only for the Lakeville Hospital property?
That's correct.
Okay, um.
So my question is, there's no other action on that then? That that line item.
Uh, the very first one?
Yeah.
I don't believe so, because I I think lots have been sold.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't think we rescind it, Rich, do we?
I mean, Rita?
We don't have to rescind the forty-three D, do we?
No, no, we're all set.
All right.
Um, the other thing, um, and I assume that what you're saying here is the the town planner, we're in the process, you know, of trying to hire the town planner. We've gone through a few searches, but hopefully we're gonna get that fine. The, so that says it's done and funded as well. The the question um I have on that particular line item is the um uh having to do with the hiring of full-time conservation agent. Um, and I think the position right now is is that um um, the the conservation agent is paid on a hourly basis and he's used whatever we needed to use him and we don't, I don't feel that we need to hire a full-time, you know, conservation agent. So uh, it says done and funded. I'm not sure what that means. Are we supposed to pursue that or not?
Rich?
Go ahead, please.
Then that the town planner was hired and funded. We didn't fund, you're right, a full-time conservation agent, but the.
Okay, so you don't have a, we don't have a task on that right now to do anything.
No, I believe it was Conservation Commission wanted a full-time.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Um, it's funny that we um we just talked about the tax rate and, you know, our tax rate, eighty percent, eighty-seven percent of it is residential and thirteen percent of it is uh, you know, uh industrial and commercial and, you know, I keep saying, and I'll say it a hundred times that, you know, uh, where is this commercial development gonna go? Where is it being proposed? Nobody, and I'm not picking on the Implementation Committee, by the way, um, you know, the planning board needs to talk about it, you know, where do we want to put it? And because as um actually, uh, Rodney here, Rodney's saying, why not adjust the spending versus the increased taxes? Yeah, I know that's easy to say, but it doesn't necessarily work that way because we have now have three hundred and thirty-five housing units at the T Station, which is causing us a lot of strain and having to do with the school system with the number of kids that are going to the schools just coming from that area. And seventy-five to eighty percent of that property that was an industrial park is now residential. And that's an area that needs to be, you know, addressed and talking about, you know, increasing the commercial and industrial the development in town at the same time, trying to manage, you know, some of these projects. That's a big problem, major problem here. We have had ninety-two uh occupancy permits issued through the month, month of November. The town has never seen that kind of volume of occupancy permits. We would average twenty-five to thirty. And now we got ninety-two this year, and it's gonna be probably close to a hundred when the year is done. We can't continue on that pace. And so we need to really put a concerted effort into trying to look at options as far as commercial and development property, and it's important. So I just want to point that out to the Implementation Committee, because I've I've said it every meeting that we've met. I think the um going down to um uh, what the number is on that one, two, three, three, two, uh, six, one, three. Talks about uh working with private ownerships and conservation groups and state and local governments to enable future open space acquisitions. It says town planner, but I also think that ought to include the um Open Space Committee as well. They need to get active. You know, looking at some of these properties to try to decide whether they're gonna protect them or not.
So, so Rich, what number was that? Six, six, one, three?
Uh. Page two, Rodney. Page, page two.
Page two, second, second one down.
I have this like, I have this electronically.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have it electronically, so I was looking at the goal.
It's a strategy. And the lead party says town planner and open space. I mean, it says town planner. We should add open space, I think.
Yes, planning board now and town planner should have.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, if that's okay, I'm just throwing that out. Um. One of the things going down to three point one, three point one and uh says modify existing uh byload to accommodate moderate density and multiple housing in appropriate locations. Um, once again, I say where, you know, and this is something that needs to be looked at and determined if that's something that we're going to do, because everything that we have uh done has been a forty-B project, and we have no control over those projects, and those projects are high-density, you know, developments. So um, we need to have a serious discussion, you know, about, you know, some of these issues having to do with the housing, because we cannot continue on this trend um, of producing all these forty-B projects that are gonna have serious effect on the schools and our services. My two cents on that one. Uh, let's see. Um, no question going down to page three, the Economic Development um, committee. Uh, we we've tried to uh get that committee going and they haven't met, and that's something that we need to do. And I know Ari is going to, the Town Administrator and Town Planner try to get that committee active, because it hasn't met in two and a half years. So we need to do something about that.
I'm sorry, Rich, which one was that?
Economic Development Committee.
Oh, okay.
Rich, if I could ask a favor, it says I don't have this printed out. I have it electronically. If you could please read when you're referencing either the goal or the strategy with the with this with the title and the number, that would be appreciated.
Thank you. Okay, going down to um uh, I it has to do with um page four, uh Economic Development, four point three. It says continue to support and protect and improve Lakeville's uh agricultural economy. Um, and it says, uh, Town Administrator, Town Planner, Agricultural Commission. I think the Open Space Committee ought to be part of that discussion too. You know, I am, Rodney?
I do, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh. Um, going down to page six, uh, nation and natural and cultural resources goal, five point four. Um, and I know there's a, and going to five point four point two. Um, and it says the merger of uh the Historical Society into the Historical Commission. Um, that is no small task, you know, to do that. I didn't even know, and maybe Rita can answer this. I don't even know if they're a nonprofit. But um, that's gonna be a challenge, you know, to even consider doing that. Okay.
Right, as the comments have read, the merger is complicated in looking at the options. I think for the purposes of the plan, um, a- again, I just want to make sure. um, a- again, I just want to make sure, we want to make sure that what's been presented can finally be, y- y- you know, accepted, get the blessing of the Board of Selectment in order to get this into the hands of the, of the citizens and also the committees. Um, and then again, this is, this is a moving target. So I think w- what my concern is as a chair, is that we keep delaying the, getting this into the hands of the appropriate people. And I want to make sure that if, if all things considered equal this evening, you know, we get through the questions and hopefully answer them to, you know, to your satisfaction, is to get the blessing of the board and to get this into the hands of the people, because this has been, this has been delayed for quite a long time. And, and you know, I want to move this along.
I agree, Rodney. I agree. Um. The. Going to page seven, um Open Space Recreational Goal six point one. Um, it says Open Space Committee, Conservation Committee, and then Planning Board. I also think the town planner would be a part of that discussion for that process.
For, for six-one-one or six, uh six-one-one, correct?
Um, I, yes.
You said town planner?
Yes.
Six-one-three, I think you meant, Rich, didn't you?
I'm sorry, three, excuse me.
Six-one-three, okay. So open space, conservation, planning. The other responsible party would be the open, uh, the town planner?
Correct. Uh, okay, um, having to do with services and facilities, uh, page eight, uh Goal seven point one. Um. We are about to at this meeting approve the feasibility study for the uh Fire Department in the Town Hall, Rodney. And uh I think what we need to do is we need to change this to um not only existing fire station, but slash Town Hall.
So under the goal?
Yeah.
And what do you want to do is add Town Hall?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, um, so we're gonna be putting together a committee, uh, probably not tonight, but at least identify what the committee's gonna look like. Um, okay, um, going down to um seven point two, Services and Facilities. Um, the comment in here about um the school supporting the um, the community efforts to improve and upgrade the elementary school. Um, the board, uh, we just got approval from the MSBA uh to put all new windows, you know, in the school, and um that's, they're gonna pay, I think it was fifty-three percent of the total cost, and so it's about.
They've actually just improved the feasibility study at this point, Rich.
Yeah, well, right. But we have to go through the process and the design or whatever, which we provided those, those, that funding at the Town Hall, I mean, at the Town Meeting. Um, so the Greens Community Grant Funds and the amount of six hundred thousand dollars that's, that's listed there. Um. I, it won't be six hundred thousand dollars. I believe Ari, it's gonna be two hundred thousand dollars if we get that. And that was not gonna be used at S-Walmsit for this, for this coming year, just so you know. So I don't know if you want to change that or not, because that's not the right number.
So estimated two hundred?
Two hundred, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and uh we gave you the update on the highway office. That's all set, ready to go. We're gonna approve that tonight too. And. Um, going down to um seven, two point four. It says consider ways to support the Historical Society and remedy accessibility issues at the museum. Um, the ramp has not been, uh, ramp has been installed. Um, we, we need to realize that this is not a town-owned building. So, you know, that's, that's an issue. So I don't know if that issue, I guess it's done, so I don't have to worry about it. Okay. Okay, just so you know, um, the um uh page nine, and the Americans with Disabilities ADA Transition Plan, and um, we have the plan in place and it's being reviewed by the state.
All right, so what?
Right now.
What goal is, what goal or strategy are you referencing, please?
Seven, two point five.
Thank you. Got it.
Okay, um.
So what was the comment? Is this a, where it said the complementary action reads grant extended to June thirtieth? What did you want to add or change?
We're in main steps now. So we're, we're, we're currently in main steps where we're gonna be applying to the state for construction funds to make the improvements once the state approves the plan. Draft plan's been submitted to the state.
So draft.
I think it's fine. Yeah, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may I? Through you? Yep, um Chair, um Rodney, did the um, the planning board review this with the um, the Master Plan Implementation Committee as well? And did they provide any input?
I'm sorry, one more time?
Did the, did you, the MPIC meet with the planning board to review this matrix as well?
We have not met with the, with, we got their updates, but the adjustments that we've made to the newest one, no, we have not met with them yet, but we do have people uh from the ma, uh, excuse me, from the planning uh board that are on our committee.
Right, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I'm not even gonna talk about the transportation piece, if it gets too complicated and messy. Um, but one of the things that, you know, um Rodney, as you know, we are we hired a consultant to do uh the qualification of the uh the town bylaws to make sure that they're all in sync and so forth and so on. Um, I think that one of the things that we need to do is, is hire another consultant to review the bylaws and make recommendations with the town planner as to changes that need to be done, because a lot of those um bylaws are outdated and need to be updated. So um, I don't know if you want to, that, I don't, you don't have to add it to the plan, because it wasn't requested that I know of.
Correct.
But um that's something that we need to talk to the planning board as well, because there's a lot of inconsistencies, you know, in the town bylaws that need to be fixed.
I just don't think that that belongs, that discussion should be part of this matrix.
Well, there is discussion in there about changing bylaws and adding bylaws, you know, to, because of certain things, so. Um, but, you know, we have a hundred and fifty changes, codification changes that have been identified that need to be changed. That's gonna be one whopping change at Town Meeting next, next May.
Right.
But that's just one piece of it. That, that is just linking the, the different uh bylaws, you know, together. That doesn't include uh errors in the bylaws or inconsistencies in the bylaws, clarification of bylaws. That's, that's a big effort, and that needs to be done.
Yeah. All right, um, Rich, do you have any more?
I'm all set.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the input. It's much appreciated.
Yeah, so um, if I um had to guess, I don't think uh we're ready to vote on this right now.
I would make a recommend, Madam Chair, I'd make a recommendation to, to approve it subject to the changes that I recommend, unless the Master Plan Implementation Committee has objection to it.
No, I, I have no objection. I, I wanna, I, I mean, truth be told, we want to get this done. I think it'd be more efficient and better if we, if you, the board could, could approve it and then subject to the, to the changes, because this has been just too long. I'm gonna be very honest. Uh, a little, I'm a little frustrated at, at how the uh, the wheels of justice are spinning right now, and they're very, very slow. I understand the board's responsibility and I can appreciate it. But, but from my committee's perspective and me personally, I would just appreciate it if the board could go ahead and make the approval, get it into the hands of the people, and then we can make those changes, because if the changes are, are a few, right, not many, I think it would, it would be uh better to have most of it taken care of and work on a little bit versus having to hold it up for a little bit for the majority of the plan. That's my opinion only.
All right, so um, Rich, do you want to make a motion?
Um, I make a motion. We approve the proposed uh Master Plan Implementation Plan uh with those uh recommended uh modifications.
Can I ask a question if you can?
Yep.
Uh, Jim Rogers, I'm, I'm the last issue you brought up was on the bylaws and the changes, and I'm not sure that fits within the scope of the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Uh, we're not gonna put that in there, Jim. Okay, as long as I, then I have no problem with it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um.
I'm gonna second for, um, I'll second the most, motion for discussion.
Okay, um, so we have a motion and a second to approve um this matrix with recommended changes. Um, okay, discussion.
Okay, so Rich, I know you've gone through this numerous times, and, and every time you look at this, you come up with something, you add something new to it. So I just want to make sure that what we're approving for changes is what we discussed tonight, I guess, because I, it's a little all over the place. So we're just adding open space committee to a couple of these lines, correct Rodney? Is that what you got out of this? And Ari? Okay, and everything else, um, as we progress and, and get this document implemented, we'll be able to update based on current status, like the ADA, Ari, correct?
That's correct. I mean, I, I honestly, I, I hate for you to view this as a static document. Really, it should be a living document that tracks.
Yes.
The processes go along.
Okay. All right, so I guess I'm, you know, I'm okay with adding the Open Space Committee to a couple of these and um but I think those were the only, like, real changes or additions to this document, correct?
There was a mention about Town Hall with the fire station project, and there was one place where Rich suggested adding Town Planner regarding open space strategy.
Okay.
That was it.
All right.
Um, I. Okay, um. I'm ready to, I, I think uh, I think Ari did a pretty good job of capturing the big changes here. So uh, I'm ready to take a vote on this. All those in favor of the motion to approve this matrix with recommended changes.
Carboni, I.
Camera, I.
AB and I, all right. So we can give this back to the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and um, you can work with Ari on those changes, and I guess just keep us, let us know, Ari, when it's done, if possible.
Hey Rodney?
Yes.
Should we not have called this meeting to order earlier?
We, we called it earlier at uh seven, I forgot what time it was, about seven-twenty. We called it, but I apologize what I did not do, and, and I think what you're getting at is I didn't call for uh the participants on the committee, and I apologize for that.
Just make it legal.
Yeah, to make it legal. So thank you very much for that, and I apologize for the oversight. So those that are in attendance for the Master Plan Implementation Committee is, uh, just, we can state our names. Rodney Dixon here.
James Rogers here.
Thank you.
Rita Garbutt here.
Patrick here.
Patrick Marshall here.
Thank you.
Ari Sky here.
Okay. All right, do you want to close your meeting now?
Uh, do, I do believe we need to, uh, or do we do it in this meeting where we would review and vote to approve the meeting minutes and the rest of our meeting and then close it?
Um, yes, if you, do you have meeting, are you posted to approve meeting minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, you can go ahead and do those.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, agenda item two, review and vote to approve the meeting minutes for September fifteenth and October nineteenth of twenty twenty-one. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
All right, do we have a second? Thank you. All in favor, I, Rodney Dixon, I.
James Rogers, I.
Jane Belene, I.
Patrick Marshall abstaining, because I wasn't at the September meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ari Sky, I.
Great, thank you. Uh, agenda item number three, next meeting scheduled for December twenty-first of twenty twenty-one. Does that work for everyone?
Sure.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, all in favor, I, Rodney Dixon, I.
Jim Rogers, I.
Rita Garbutt, I.
Jane Belene, I.
Patrick Marshall, I.
Ari Sky, I.
Thank you. Uh, and finally, any other business that may properly come before this meeting? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, Patrick Marshall.
A second?
Jim Rogers, second.
Thank you. All in favor, I, Rodney Dixon, I.
Rita Garbutt, I.
James Rogers, I.
Jane Belene, I.
Patrick Marshall, I.
Ari Sky, I.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much uh for this and the opportunity to, to sit in front of the uh, the selectmen, the Board of Selectmen, much appreciated. Have an awesome night, and we'll talk soon. Be well.
Thanks Rodney, thank you team.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone. All right, um, so at this point, I'm gonna skip to um number eight. We have the Fire Chief, I believe, the Police Chief, the Town Clerk. I'm gonna try to finish those, um, and then we'll go back to number five. So agenda item number eight. We do have the Fire Chief, uh, O'Brien with us. So we have a memo from the chief. Do you want to give us um uh summary?
Madam Chair, I'm looking for authorization from the Select Board to uh apply for an AFG grant, which is Assistance to Firefighters Grant. It's a federal program that um provides assistance to municipal fire departments for uh fundamental equipment, basic life safety equipment that, that, that we need. Um, it's a competitive grant program, and so we tailor the grant, we write the grant um based on the town's needs, but we write it in a way that uh addresses the uh, the, the notice of funding. Uh, so basically, our strategy is to um apply for must-have things, and in this case, we're applying for self-contained breathing apparatus, the, the tanks that we wear on our back to enter uh hazardous atmospheres. Um, absolutely a necessity for a fire department to have. Um, the idea is to transfer the, the burden of paying for those pieces of equipment to uh, you know, to pay for it with federal dollars and therefore relieve the burden on our local taxpayers.
Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, uh, which is a two hundred thousand dollar grant and a possible ten thousand dollar match.
You just be approving the applica, approving, authorizing the applications as is local management, Madam Chair.
Okay, so approving the application.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Okay, I.
AB and I. Thank you, Chief, for hanging around. Um. I think that's it with you tonight, right?
Oh, okay, I'm logging off. I thank you all very much for your support. I appreciate it. I'll keep you updated.
Thank you. Um, so do we have um uh Chief Perkins with us? There he is. All right, we're gonna skip down to number eleven. Um. So, will you have an appointment?
I, I don't have an appointment um, um before you tonight, uh seeking authorization to offer the job to someone at a, at a higher level than step one. Uh, we have an open position left vacant from an officer who left the state police. Uh, we posted the position. We had several applicants, did a bunch of uh background checks. Uh, narrowed it down to two finalists. Uh, the one finalist that we'd like to hire um was chosen because he has uh the experience that we're looking for. Uh, he works over in Berkeley PD. He's been a police officer for six years. Uh, we offered him the job um to come in at step one. He didn't realize how much of a pay cut it was gonna be. He didn't realize how much of a pay cut it was gonna be to, uh, come over to Lakeville. Um, so he turned down the offer. Um, it was suggested that maybe I could see if we could bring him in at a higher step, uh, under the Lakeville Police Association Collective bargaining agreement. Um, it, there's language in there that says all new officers shall be brought in at step one. The union had a vote, um, and they waived that, um, that language, so I could bring it before you tonight. And I'm just looking for authorization to see if I could bring him in and offer him, uh, step three. Um, that money is available in the budget, uh, because the officer who left the state police was a top step patrolman, and I've had his salary since July one.
Okay, um, do we have any questions from the selectmen for the chief?
I do, I have a question, Madam Chair. Um, so Chief, does this mean that, um, going forward that we might have to change, um, our hiring if we're if it was, step one was too low?
Uh, step will like, step one, bringing someone in at step one with no experience, um, while coming from a, a different job where we send somebody to the police academy, I think step one is completely legitimate, but when we, we're trying to recruit someone who, who's been to the police academy that has worked for another municipality, um, we want someone with experience, and I think to bring them over at step one, um, would be, you know, too much of a pay cut. Um, and eve, even if we do, you authorized me offering him step three, him coming over to Lakeville, he's still taking a pay cut at step three.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Rich, any questions?
I guess the only thing that I would, uh, ask the chief to do is that, uh, I think he said the union voted on it. I would ask that the union, uh, document that and send it to, uh,
I did, I provided a letter and sent it in with the request, uh, Tracy.
So we already got the letter?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, it's at the end of the, the packet.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so if that's the case, I will entertain a motion for, um, an offer to be made to Zachary Mosher at step three, twenty-six forty-one per hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Camera, I.
Fabian, I. All right.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
We'll see you soon with an appointment.
Okay, thank you. Um, do we have Lillian Drain with us? There she is. There she is. Town Clerk Lillian Drain is with us, so this is number twelve. I know that you, uh, have someone that you, uh, want to hire, correct?
Yes, so it's taking at least a little bit over two months, but we finally found someone. Um, under, um, chapter forty-one, section nineteen, I appointed, um, Kimberly DeGracia, um, to fill in, um, as assistant town clerk. Um, she's been with us, uh, working for the town of Lakeville since two thousand and fifteen, um, in different, um, departments. So, I'm asking for the board to, um, to approve her, um, stepping up to step four, um, grade six, uh, grade C, I'm sorry. It's a, an exempt position, a union position. Um, she brings a lot of, um, a wealth of knowledge and, um, and strong customer service skills.
Okay, so, um, it's an exempt union position, grade C.
Step four.
Step four, okay. Um, does anyone have any questions? All right, um, so I will entertain a motion, um, that Kimberly DeGracia, uh, be, start her employment at grade C, fourth step, uh, in the, as the new assistant town clerk.
I'm moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanna let.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanna let the board know that she is, um, willing to stay and do, uh, payroll that we, we will need for her to do for us until, um, we find a replacement, but I'm hoping she would start in my office sometime after Sep- September twentieth.
December twentieth?
December twentieth.
December twentieth. Did I say September?
Yeah, September, probably.
Okay, all right, um, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Oh, the camera, I.
AB and I. All right, thank you, Town Clerk Lillian Drain. Thank you so much. All right, um, do we have Franklin with us or no?
He's here.
He's here, okay. Oh, there he is, okay. Um, so let's go to number thirteen, please. Uh, he's thirteen and okay, um, so we have Frank Monies with us, the DPW director, who has requested to hire Hayden Taylor as emergency highway operator at level six, step five at twenty-four forty-five per hour, plus the five dollar per hour stipend for having a CDL license, which was what we approved at our selectmen's meeting on October. The, um, five dollar for the stipend for the CDL license was approved by the board of selectmen on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Frank, do you have any, um, anything to add to that?
Uh, no, just that this is a much-needed position, and I'm very happy that he's willing to do this, uh, emergency operating for us this winter, because it's something that, that we really need.
Yeah, okay. Um, all right, any questions for Frank? All right, okay, um, if not, then I will entertain a motion for the DPW director to hire Hayden Taylor as emergency highway operator at level six, step five at twenty-four forty-five per hour, plus the five dollar per hour stipend for having a CDL license.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Camera.
Uh, Fabian, I. Okay, I think that's it, right Frank? Or are you hanging out, hanging out? Is there anything else we have for Frank?
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right, thank you, um.
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have Nate Darling with us or not? Oh, there he is, Nate is with us, all right.
Chair, Nate will also be with us for items nine and ten as well, so.
Oh, okay, so then how about we, Nate, I'm sorry, I was trying to, to, to get you out, but, um, I'm sorry.
I'm fine if you take him in line, thank you.
I'm sorry, now we're gonna go back to number five. All right, so I'm just gonna try to go through these quickly. Um, it's, we still have at least a good hour ahead of us, so, um, agenda item number five, Board of Selectmen announcements. Um, so, selectman La Camera wanted us to make sure that we don't forget to thank um, our police, our fire, our DPW, and, um, Ari Sky also uh, for their diligence during the storm a month ago, which I think it was a month, five weeks ago. Um, Rich, I don't know if you wanna add to that?
Um, Madam Chair, the only thing that I would say was a very difficult storm for, you know, the town. I mean, we haven't seen so much tree damage and, uh, outage, you know, for a long, long time like that, and I know that, uh, you know, the whole group, um, did a terrific job, and we ought to thank Middleborough Gas and Electric, you know, as well, because they had to deal with a lot of outages, the main outages of the town, so, uh, we appreciate everybody's effort.
Yep, absolutely. I know, uh, everyone was up at the, well, I don't even know that the fire department had any time off, uh, or the police for that matter, but I know Ari Sky was up at three AM too, so, um, with the, uh, DPW director, so, uh, thank you to everybody, um, amazing work, really. Um, okay, a little more run-of-the-mill here. So, the Middleborough Gazette, um, as many folks know, and if you don't know, um, is going to cease, uh, publication in a, uh, hard copy format. So, December second will be their last issue. Going forward, legal notices will be published in the Standard Times. So, um, going forward, we just need everyone to know that anytime there is a notification for a hearing or, um, a warrant, or all kinds of legal, um, publish, publications we do, it'll be in the Standard Times. The second one we have is, the town is holding a public meeting at the Lakeville Police Station on Saturday, December fourth, twenty twenty-one, from nine to eleven AM regarding the drafting of the natural hazard mitigation plan. This plan will update its parts. Um, it's part in the two thousand and four regional hazardous mitigation plan. Having an up-to-date hazard mitigation plan helps the town plan and receive funding for projects that reduce the risk of injury or damage to property from future nat- natural hazard events such as flooding and hurricanes. So if you want to participate, um, it's at the, again, police station this Saturday, December fourth, from nine AM to eleven AM. Uh, the Lakeville Arts Council presents the All That Litters Holiday Shopping Event at the Loon Pond Lodge located in Ted Williams Camp, twenty-eight Precinct Street. On December third, the event will be open from five PM to eight PM. Lakeville's own Blake Gorman will entertain the crowds with live music. On December fourth, the event will be open from ten AM to three PM. Bella Sarkozy will entertain shoppers with jazz guitar music as well as other holiday music. And this is a great chance to shop locally and pick up handmade items for gift-giving and support local crafters, artisans, and organizations. I'm sure this will be on our website, but again, that is December third in the evening and December fourth during the day from ten AM to three PM. Um, also on Saturday, December fourth at six PM, please join the Lakeville Lions at one seventy Main Street for their tree lighting and caroling. There will be a visit from Santa and refreshments served. The Lions Club is also collecting unwrapped toys for, toys for tots and food items for the Sacred Heart Food Pantry. Um, so again, all these notices will be put on the town's website. Do any of the other selectmen have anything to add?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Um, just wanted to, the, the board to know that the, um, the, uh, Marijuana Host Committee, uh, Charitable Contribution Committee has met, uh, about a month ago, and Ari put together a form for, um, all the, um, anybody, any of the departments that wanna submit, you know, a request, you know, if you use some of that funding. And, uh, he has received, uh, I don't know, probably eight or ten of those applications. And the, um, committee is going to meet on, uh, December seventh, and will review those requests and come back with a recommendation for the board of selectmen to approve.
Okay, thank you for that update. Um, anything else? All right, then I am going to agenda item number six, Town Administrator Announcements, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'll try to make this quick. Um, relocation to the old library have gone underway this week. The building department's moving first, remainder department will follow shortly. Um, a few weeks ago, I attended the Mass Municipal Managers Association Fall Conference. Um, there's an excellent presentation by Ron Hallifield, who's a former manager and now a consultant on something called servant leadership, which involves the establishment of an organizational culture that looks beyond short-term concerns to focus on effective stewardship for the town and its resources. It's a really intriguing concept, I'm looking forward to working, uh, to incorporating into some of the things we do, working with our, the town staff. Um, our new, um, HR Director, John Virella, started work today. Um, on November fourth, I met with Middleborough Gas and Electric, uh, regarding a range of topics, including, um, the town's, um, our resource commitments regarding collection of utility liens, a potential signing for EV charging stations, which is something that's gonna be coming toward us quickly. Um, repair and replacement of streetlights on Kenneth Walt's Drive, as well as a preliminary discussion regarding some streetscape improvement projects, our concepts that we've been thinking about. Um, the file reorganization project, uh, Curse of King Systems will begin in January. Um, initial focus is gonna be on the records in town hall. Projects entirely funded by a community compact grant, which the town received as part of a joint application with Free Town a few years ago. Um, we're also moving forward on the haunted house demolition and the peach barn roof projects as well. Um, number of grand reward, grant awards to mention as well, um, police department received, uh, fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and five dollars in nine, nine-one-one grants for, I'll pay for dispatchers and, uh, training expenses. Um, police department also received a twenty thousand dollar highway safety grant for Georgia patrols and radar speed signs. I received the annual recycling grant of four thousand two hundred dollars, um, as, and a fifteen thousand dollar grant, um, from the state for thermal audits in preparation for this year's Green Communities Application, so, all good stuff. Um, and, um, just to give the board a heads up, I am looking at the possibility of a briefing by an attorney for the opioid, opioid consortium, uh, the opioid litigation consortium, um, regarding the status of the, of the, uh, um, uh, of that litigation and what they're, what they're recommending, town council's recommending that, that the, the town do. Um, we're looking at hopefully sometime in December, it could be January, depending on availability and schedules and things like that. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right, that's a lot.
It is a lot.
That's a lot. All right, so, um, number seven, agenda item number seven. So this is the Budget Outlook and Guidelines. So, Ari, I'm gonna turn this over to you, and I'm assuming Christina?
Yep, I'm gonna share screen and walk through the, the presentation.
Christina?
Um, yes, of course, this is, uh, Christina Cottserita, so Assistant to the Town Administrator. Um, Christina is, um, acting this year as kind of the budget director and helping, uh, manage the, the budget process, which is gonna be a little more involved, a little different than what departments have been used to in the past. As we're trying to get some more transparency gradually into the process, more information for the board's use and for, uh, the public's use when it comes to decisions and understanding just what, what goes in, what the inputs and, uh, and, and considerations are when it comes to the budget overall. Um, okay, let's see, share screen, here we go, okay. Can everyone see that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so, the, this, the intention of this meeting today is to give you a sense of some of the considerations and things that we're seeing, uh, regards to the budget process uh, for the coming year, and, and how we're, and, and what type of initial planning we're doing. Um, none of this is binding conversation, none of this is, is firm approval of anything. This is simply for planning considerations to give you a sense of where we're coming from, what we're seeing, and, um, and also honestly to give you a chance to weigh in if it's something you see that looks particularly concerning, or you want, that you, that you'd like to make sure that we take care of. Um, oh, sorry, just jumped up, here we go. Uh, the first section is just some economic indicators, giving you a sense of what's going on out there. Um, the, um, number of home sales, as we know, it's been increasing. Uh, the, uh, what's kind of interesting is that you'll see it's a little blocked out there, but whoop. The, um, the number of home sales listed for twenty twenty, which, which is a total of two seventy-five, it's a little blotted. Um, already here today, we're two thirty-two through October. Um, median sale price, um, as the, for the year in twenty twenty, was four hundred and ten thousand, and this is October twenty twenty-one, we're four seventy-seven, four hundred. So, um, sort of underscores what Harold was saying earlier, those numbers are trending in a certain way. Um, this gives you a sense of unemployment. Um, you'll see in twenty twenty, the big drop in employment for the, for the year, that has recovered somewhat. As of October twenty twenty-one, the total number of employed residents was six thousand two hundred and fifty-four, which is better than five thousand nine hundred and one, but still much lower than, you know, you see down to like, uh, twenty seventeen levels. The unemployment rate has come back. Um, it was, the average for twenty twenty was eight point three percent. Um, as of October twenty twenty-one, it's four point seven percent, again, elevated compared to what we were most recently. This is a look at general fund revenue and expenditure history. Um, you'll see we've done a pretty good job over the years of ensuring that our revenue outpaces our expenditures slightly, which, yeah, in turn generates a healthy free cash number, which is what we use to fund our capital program. So it's all kind of an ecosystem that we've developed, which, um, which works pretty well for the town in terms of having a, uh, fairly low debt ratio, getting things that need to get, get done, done, um, uh, really, and having the benefit of budgeting conservatively. Um, the, um, and this gives you a sense of year over year, um, was, you see the, the top line here is, is education, which has gone pretty steadily up, but operating expenditures have as well, they're not quite as steadily as, as education. but operating expenditures have as well, though not quite as steadily as education. Well, fixed expenditures have stayed relatively constant up a little bit. This is new growth. This was the number for 2022. As you see, it's up quite a bit. And the, actually, the actual number is actually a little better, I think, which we just got to 533. So the, but the trend remains that our new growth numbers continue to grow at a rather rapid pace. And I am moving quickly, Madam Chair, just because I know the time. If people want me to slow down or have questions or want to interrupt, please go right ahead. I'm just trying to be cognizant of the amount of time we've invested tonight. The couple of things that we know as far as compensation goes, CBA increases 2% for the three unions, plus steps. This, the cost for 2023 will be $83,000. For non-union, for planning purposes, what I'd like to do is use what we did for FY22, which was a 3% increase for department heads in '22, and then for staff, 3% for full-time, 2% for part-time in '22. Again, that'll be my proposed budget. The board will make the decision as to what the compensation will actually be, but it would be irresponsible not to have anything in a proposed budget. So that's, that's, that's the allowance I'd like to do unless someone feels strongly otherwise. There are going to be some requests for new positions. One thing that I think we'll probably be looking at pretty closely is the idea of a facilities manager, which would be someone, you know, we, as you know, we've hired OPMs to handle a number of our capital projects because of bandwidth issues. That's probably not cost-effective going forward. You know, you have these two task orders in front of you, which in total are, you know, $80,000-plus. A facilities measure wouldn't eliminate that, but would certainly cause the need to be a little bit less. Health insurance, you know, we're talking about, we're going to talk about cost share and things like that, some possibilities. And possibly a high deductible plan, that's also been talked about. The, the NFP estimates that the health insurance premiums would, should be increasing, or health insurance premium estimate should be about 6% increase in, for FY23, which is a little high considering where we last few years, but probably reasonable considering what's been talked about post-pandemic. Education, expect to have more data in December from the school districts, at least that's what they've told me. We are, I'm in close conversations with both Free Town Lakeville and Old Colony, trying to get a sense of what to look for. And we've also been talking to Bristol Aggie. The marijuana, just to give an overall sense, the budget's about, we budgeted $150,000 in '22. And FY21, we collected close to $200,000. And so the FY, so maybe some upside for FY23. Snow removal may be advisable to increase for FY23, given what the past several years have been. The budget is now at 107.5, which is still well below any year that we've had in prior history. It probably would be logical to, if we can find the room to knock that up a little bit. Going to free cash now because that is how we principally fund the capital. The free cash number for '22 is very healthy, $2.4 million. It would be inadvisable to spend all that because it does affect your fund balance, but there are things you can do policy-wise that would be helpful as well, while still maintaining a fairly robust capital program. Some potential uses would be stabilization. The board's financial management policy targets 10% of general fund operating revenue. That would mean adding $762,000 to be able to maintain that target in FY23. It's underfunded right now. OPEB, the trust contribution schedule, calls for $310,000 contribution. Then we are also running our capital program. We have submissions due from departments on December 6th. And we'll be going through all of the information, coming, putting together a recommended plan, which I'll be submitting at the same time as the proposed budget, January. And then, you know, the possibility, of course, would be advisable retaining a portion of your free cash for unanticipated expenditures such as snow removal. Here's just a look at the budget calendar, which you've all seen. This is just a lot prettier than anything I've given you before. The, the governor's budget should be coming out in January. It'll be very interesting to see what they do. Particularly interested in unrestricted government aid. The past seven years, I guess, six, seven, seven years or so, Governor Baker's policy has been to propose an increase in, I'm sure, to general government aid equivalent to the, to the rate of increase in general fund budget, in general fund revenue for the state. That's a big number this year. Their numbers have really been climbing. So it'll be interesting to see whether they stick to that again this year or whether we end up with a number that's a little bit less, but that potentially could be some upside there. The, my proposed budget will be going to the board on January 24th. February, we'll have some meetings with the Board of Selectmen, with the various departments and so on. And, and then in March, submission, submission deadline for articles on the education budget will be approved by the final version of education, will be approved by the Free Town Lakeville School Committee. We'll go through the Finance Committee with their budget reviews, planning to finalize the budget by April, in time for the, for the Springtown Meeting warrants. So the only other one I want to show you accompanies this, is this much less attractive, but hopefully, hopefully equally informative outlook, which, the idea behind what I had here was trying to give you an overall sense of what, how the budget looks. It's a good kind of sensitivity test to see whether you have a potential deficit and whether you have realistic assumptions. So you'll see what we did here is we, this is just changes. So, you know, we say with two and a half percent increase would be, we put in a modest number for new growth. There's a lot of upside to that number. I think we know that. Put a plug in for state aid. We have local receipts going up by 6%, which is very comfortable considering the amount of new growth that we assigned to local receipts in this year's budget. So we have a lot of upside there. The septic loan question as well. And then on the expenditure side, I have a number of planning contingencies. Admin staff salaries, which is to fully fund the, the two new positions in the, in the budget, the assistant to the administrator and the planner. Firefighters, we have two that were previously funded by CARES Act, which are 50% funded in '22, so you have to fully fund them in '23. The CBA increases that I previously mentioned, call for existing staff, which I previously mentioned. 6% increase in insurance. We do, actually do have a number for our pension assessment, that's up another $100,000. General insurance, I got a rough number from Mr. Oliveri on that. And then we have placeholders, which I've been told are fairly reasonable numbers to put in for the, for the education districts. Again, we'll have more next month, which I will keep you informed in. I have a placeholder for enhancements of $100,000. That could be anything. And again, it's just a planning placeholder. Bottom line, you have a surplus of about $75,000 on that balance. So it says to me that early on, it looks like we're going to have room to be able to do what we need to do and, and cover the needs that we need to have and be able to budget relatively conservatively. Again, the budget guidelines that we've been talking about are trying to increase the bottom line. Limit, limit the increase, bottom line increases to contractual obligations. If there's anything beyond that, then the departments are required to submit enhancement. The, those are restorations, new programs, things like that. And we may require reduction plans if something bad goes down. Right now, I don't really think this is necessarily going to be the case. But, but we do always, you know, hold on to that possibility just in case. I don't want to be surprised. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, Madam Chair, members of the board that you have on this. But that's the, that's the lightning fast overview of what we're looking at, spending wise.
I don't have any immediate questions. I know this is, you know, just preliminary. If the other selectmen have any questions, feel free.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I just wanted to say, Ari, Christina, thank you for putting this together. I think it was very clear, and it does give us a, you know, kind of an intro to the work that's coming. So I appreciate that by collecting, putting it all together.
Thank you.
Rich?
I just want to thank Ari for taking it over.
Yeah.
Very well thought out, you know, did a nice job. And, you know, now's the time of year, and thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We're building this, I can tell you Christina can weigh in. She's starting to meet with departments on a daily, well, she has meetings with departments on a daily basis and has been setting up our, our internal review meetings and everything. So we got this, it's, it's, it's a lift, as you know, Rich, it is a lift. But, well, but, but we know what we're in for. And fortunately, you, you hire somebody who, who has done a few budgets in his past. So I, I think we'll be able to keep this process moving.
And I'm thrilled with that. Thank you.
Yeah. I think, I think that each of the selectmen probably talks to Ari regularly enough that, you know, he knows I've already pinpointed some of my concerns to him on what, you know, the budget is. And, you know, again, everything's preliminary at this point. But I know, Ari, you're open to conversations, you know, if the other selectmen have something that, you know, they want to share about the budget before you get too far into it. But otherwise, you know, I know you've been working on this, and Christina has too. Really, thank you very much. I know that you started your budget kickoff with department heads over a month ago, so.
I mean, in the end, Madam Chair, I think, I really appreciate that. This is really, this process is about developing a budget that the board, you know, feels it can own. So my, my job is to interpret what your priorities are, not my priorities, but your priorities are, and my priorities are your priorities. And, and, and put together a budget that's reflective of that. So we're, you know, I think it's really important that we keep these conversations going and running. And, you know, you'll be, you'll, you're definitely going to hear from us in January with the proposed, but, you know, there aren't going to be surprises either. You're going to know what's happening. You're going to know what's coming.
Okay. All right. So if that's it, thank you, Christina, for, for staying with us. I know it's late, getting late. All right, moving along to item, agenda item number nine. So I'm going to let you take this one to Ari, if you don't mind.
I think we have Nate here somewhere as well.
Yes.
Okay. So now, Nate, you want to come on? There he is.
There he is. There he is.
So as you know, we've taken on a, a new approach to try to deal with the backlog in capital projects and to kind of, and to bring us up to, kind of bring us up to speed a little bit. The, the approach that we've taken is the OPM approach, which is the owner's project manager. We have signed, the town has signed contracts with three firms, which are going to be doing, which have varieties, different specialties, every one of them. They're all a little bit different. And they're, they're going to help assist moving projects forward. There are three task orders that are being assembled right now. Two of them, you have the drafts for in front of you. The third one is with environmental partners, and it's going to be funded by ARPA proceeds, if the board so approves. You'll probably see that in December meeting, and that's going to be looking at water services to the, to the town facilities. Ways to secure that in a, in a more definitive way, more cost-effectively as well. It'll be a fairly sizable capital investment, but it'll mean all the water issues that we always hear about, a place like John Pond Park and so on, are dealt with. Anyway. So the two scopes that you have in front of you right now are for the DPW Administration Building with Partners to Palmeroy Associates and for the Town Hall Fire Station Study, which is with CBI. The contracts themselves, you don't need to approve. You don't even need to approve the scopes of work, but I, I very much want to, you know, solicit your input and get your guidance on what you want to see and hear if anything's missing in terms of process. And then when it comes to the, well, the DPW building is a smaller project that we can probably handle as a normal capital project. The Town Hall, you know, Town Halls are kind of catalytic transformative projects for an, for an organization. And there really should be a building committee focused on working on that, providing oversight as we go along. Assuming that this, of course, is the first step in eventual Town Hall, Town Hall and/or slash fire station project. So Nate, do you want to add anything before we dive into this anymore?
No, you just summed it up. If there's any questions, I don't mind answering them.
Okay. The, the Palmeroy run is this, the Palmeroy project is designed in some, in a, it appears to serve a few months to get us a conceived project with designs and bid specs ready to go, so that we'll be able to put that out. And I, I really want to be able to have a clear idea of what the nut looks like in, well, in advance of Springtown Meeting. Because I, I mean, let's be honest, $265,000, $235,000 is not a lot of money for this kind of project. We have budgeted. So we, you can, you can almost take to the bank that there's going to be another, there's going to be a need for something there. And, and I want to be transparent and clear about that. So for a relatively modest amount, Palmeroy will give us some definition on that, on what it is that we're looking for. The, the Town Hall study is done by CBI, which is a SOCA tech company. Their, their budget fits within the appropriation that was made at last Springstown meeting to begin that, that process. The, that, that one's a little more general than the Palmero one for obvious reasons. So, yeah, I don't know if there are some things you want to look for in there that are missing or not in there. But, but sort of larger than that is the discussing the mechanics of the process for management of that project and what we want that to look like. You know, we're, but they want to have a building committee, what you want that building committee to consist of and how you want to move forward on that. That one, we really do need to get some guidance from the board on specifically. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
All right. So why don't we take the first one as the DPW building? So I, I sort of agree that I don't necessarily think we need a whole building committee. I think that, I think that's the smaller of the two projects. Less variables. It's, it's a pretty cut and dry type of building. It's not, it needs, certainly needs some technology, but not like the police station that needed, you know, a ton of technology put into it. So if the other selectmen want to weigh in on what they feel like for the DPW building, feel free.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to, I mean, I, I know that this is a smaller scale project than Town Hall, but I would like, you know, clear definition as to the oversight, even though we do have an OPM overseeing, you know, getting the project together. We need, I would like representation designated as Town, whether that is Nate to oversee it or if it's Franklin. Ari, I want, I think that we need to designate somebody to be that point person.
Well, I think it's fine. I mean, you know, I, we can stress that more explicitly, but the, given that it's a task order contract and that they are under contract with the town, obviously, it's going to be our responsibility to oversee that contract. So, but, but I'll be happy to, if, if, to, to clarify some sort of steering committee for that. That's, that's fine.
I, I know. I would be more comfortable with that.
Okay.
All right. I mean, what are we suggesting here?
Madam Chair, just clarification, just so maybe Lorraine doesn't realize this. It not only includes the schematic design and so forth, but it also includes the management of the project. So this is a project.
Yeah, I understand the process, Rich. Thank you for bringing that up, though. But I just want to make sure that, you know, we have input, you know, to this as well, that.
Of course, we're going to have input.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this is, this kind of project, I, I mean, it's, it's, it's not, it's not going to be moved, regardless of whether a, the board is technically required to issue the RFP or not. This isn't a project that I'm going to, that I'm going to move forward without, you know, running it by the board as I am, as we are at this stage. There will be several points along the way. That being said, I think, Lorraine, it makes, it makes perfect sense if we want to have, I could, you know, myself, Nate and Franklin, you know, could, yeah, as the stakeholders can oversee and we'll, and we'll report back to. So, you know, it's not going out to bid without the board seeing what we're doing. I can promise you that.
I understand.
Yeah. All right. So if, if all three selectmen want to, we can put together, do we want to call it a steering committee? What do we want to call it? Of Town Administrator, Building Commissioner, and DPW Director?
That's fine.
Okay. So do we want to make a motion somehow to create a steering committee for the oversight of the DPW? Does that sound? Nate, what do you think? I know you've done several of these before.
Yeah. And this is just a point of clarification. This is just for this OPM contract. As Ari, as Ari alluded to, I'm sure we're going to have to go back to Town Meeting for additional funding sources. But, you know, I would like to also take this opportunity as. You know, I would like to also take this opportunity is, um, you know, taking this approach, spending the money to stick build this. Uh, this is the right way to do it. Uh, we follied on numerous occasions with the modular. Um, it just wasn't what it was cracked up to be. It wasn't going to be, uh, suit the needs of the towns long term, so. That's it. So this, this steering committee would just oversee, uh, this OPM piece and bring it back to town meeting for additional funding.
Okay. All right, so, um. Uh, so I'll entertain a motion that we, the steering committee be made up of town administrator, building commissioner, DPW director. To oversee the OPM piece of the DPW building construction.
I'm moved.
A second with discussion.
Okay.
I, I really don't think we need a quote unquote steering committee. We have three top line managers here. That, you know, take responsibility for it. So I don't understand why we need a committee to do this. We have the town administrator, the building inspector and the highway director. So, but that's just my opinion.
Okay.
So if nobody from the board is going to serve on it, why do we need a steering committee? I got, uh, Stan.
Okay. Yep, no, that's fine. All right. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
The camera, no.
Uh, Fabian, I. All right. So we have that. Now let's talk about the town hall feasibility study, which I think is, um, a much bigger.
Yes.
Chair, can we approve this contract first, please? I make a motion to approve the Palmeri Associates, uh, contract in the amount. Not to exceed $24,930 and to be, uh, assigned by the town administrator.
Okay.
So that's not required under the new policy, but feel free. It's, it's okay by me.
Well, I think we should.
Okay.
I'll, I'll step down and second that motion. Any discussion other than Ari's comment? All those in favor?
The camera, I.
Carboni, I.
Okay, Fabian, I. All right. So let's move to the town hall now. So I, uh. I would also appreciate Nate's insight, um, into this one too. I know Ari, I'll, I'll give you final word. But if, uh, yeah, if Nate, do you have any kind of, um, discussion on this?
Oh, so to start with, um, you know, typically we'll see a feasibility study, uh, in the ballpark of 1% of estimated. Uh, construction costs. So at a number around $70,000, we're looking at, um, what would cover us for up to a $7 million building. Um, if we were looking at numbers around $5 million for a town hall or 12 million for, um, a new fire station, I think we're right. In the ballpark. So to start with, I think the number's fair. So, you know, we have, uh, numerous different scenarios that we're looking at. We're going to be doing a space needs assessment. Um, we'll be looking at, um, whether or not it's going to be a renovation, uh, of the existing facility. Um, whether it be for a fire or a town hall and then whatever is in renovated, um, there would be a new structure. Uh, to meet those needs. So it would be, uh, renovate the existing building into a town hall, build a new fire station. Renovate, renovate the existing building into a fire station, build a new town hall, or it might be a hybrid, um, where with this addition on this building. Um, and then, uh, you know, use this building for both town hall and fire station.
Okay, um, could I just, uh, mention that there is a previous. Feasibility study that exists. It's not quite 20 years old, but.
Is reference, is actually referenced in the, um, in the, in the scope of work. You notice there under, under A1. Initial assessment review, the prior study completed by Castle Booze. That's the one they're talking about. Yeah.
Yeah, I just know that a couple of folks have contacted me, so I want to say for the record that, um, that that study will be considered.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. So I mean, that study is at this point, you know, somewhat dated, especially since the police station has been built. But, but it's, but, but there's certainly elements to it that are relevant. Some of the, um, the physical layout of town hall is actually quite different from what it was back then as well. So, um, the internal layout. So there are a lot, there are a lot of things that have changed, but it's a good starting point.
Yeah. So I just want folks to know that, you know, that study that was done will also be considered, looked at, um, in this whole process. Um, are we looking to put together? I mean, I think we definitely for this, um, should put together some sort of a committee. I don't know what we want to call it. Ari, do you have any suggestions?
Sure. Um, so I think something like this, um, which is a. Kind of a tent pole project for any municipality. You're talking about it potentially of a town hall or fire station. Those are both. You know, big things. Um, usually you have a building committee that has, um, uh, some representation on it from governance. As well as perhaps community and so on. I do think that starting out, you can keep the building committee fairly tight. Um, just because it's mostly an internal assessment, determining what the needs are, um, space wise and things like that. It's not going to get as much into, there'll be a little bit of test fitting of potential locations, but it's not really going to get into design. It's not too much, you know, specific design. It's just going to be getting into like, you know, it'll, it'll be listing options of different siding locations and things like that. So what I would suggest you do is you start with a fairly tight building committee, um, you know, five, seven people, something like that. And then, you know, with, with the understanding that, that if this moves forward, if, you know, by the time we get to Springtown meeting, we're ready to put in for a design. Then, um, then, then, you know, then, then we up the game a little bit and go for a larger committee.
Okay, um, Rich, Lorraine, anybody want to offer?
Well, um, we'll need, uh, just, uh, I guess to make it more formal, um, a charge for the committee. I mean, we can probably piggyback what we did for the, um, police station building committee.
Well, this is for. The feasibility study part of it, right?
You know. I don't know if you wanted to, well, I don't know. It, it all depends on how you want to handle, how, how, how firmly you want to make the committee at this stage of the process.
I personally, I think it's early, but, um.
I was going to, yeah, I mean, I, I, some of you have mentioned to me that you felt it was, be important to have some. Governance representation on from the outset and that's fine. I have no problem with that at all. So, um, I'll leave it to the board to decide who that would be. Um, and then, um, uh, beyond that, I'd say sort of the core that we absolutely would have to have on would be myself. Um, Nate, uh, Chief O'Brien and, um, I'm missing one. I'm, I'm having, I'm having a, a three hour into a meeting moment here. Um, yeah.
I think, uh, what I, what I have done as a suggestion would be, uh, one selectman, town administrator, building commissioner, fire chief. And I, that's four.
Right.
And, um, I didn't know if, you know, we wanted to do, um, a finance committee member, which we do. Occasionally, or if that should be something for a, an actual position further down during maybe the. Design, construction, whatever phase, I don't know.
I, I think, I think eventually when you get to the point where you're really getting into the, we're going to say to here or there, what are you going to look, what's it going to look like, things like that. You're probably going to have a citizen representation of some sort as well. Um, I don't know that you need that yet.
Yeah, that, that was my other, my other was, um, a community member that, um. You know, may. Um, have an interest or some sort of a background, um. You know, that I would say five people. I don't know that, you know, nine is definitely too many for me at this point. Seven, I think is still too many at this point. I don't know. Nate, do you have a suggestion on number? I'm going to put you on the spot.
Nate, I haven't talked about this. He's going to be honest.
Five or seven are perfectly fine. I, I, I might, um, suggest somebody like, um, our, uh, wonderful, uh, town clerk, Lil Drain. To get the, uh, town hall perspective. Um, she's got a great outlook. She's a town resident. I have a lot of respect for her.
She also understands the, um, the front counter flow as well as anybody. So I think, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Do the, all right, so let's just agree on the number five. Um, is everyone happy with the number five? And then we'll kind of put it all into a motion, I guess. Anyone want to discuss the number five? Okay, um, so the makeup would be, um. One selectman, town administrator, building commissioner, fire chief, um, and town clerk. Does anyone want to discuss that makeup?
So just a full disclosure, I'm sure, you know, it, on occasion, I'll be, I'll probably want to bring in, you know, people like Paul McNally. Things like that when we're dealing for technical support. Um, and maybe Christina might help out now and then, um, that kind of thing. But I think this is a good, to the principles on the committee, that's a good, good composition.
Yeah, well, I kind of consider them. As having roles.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have the number five. Does anyone want to suggest something different for the actual five positions? Five people. Okay, so. I will entertain a motion that we create a building committee to oversee. Is that the right word? The town hall feasibility study. Project.
Town Hall Fire Station, Town Hall slash Fire.
Town Hall slash Fire Station to be made up of, um, five members. Including one selectman, town administrator, building commissioner, fire chief and town clerk. And if the town clerk can't serve, we can revisit that fifth position. Is that okay? All right. We have a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
No, I guess we can call it the Town Hall Fire Station Building Committee.
Yeah, okay, um, so. All right, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
The camera.
Fabian, I. Okay, do we, um, want to appoint a selectman tonight? Or do we want to do that at our next meeting after we have a chance to discuss something like what Lorraine said? Making a charge or anything else? Anyone?
We can wait.
You, Ari and Nate, I'm sure you're okay waiting.
Yeah, I mean, we won't stop the process.
Yeah, no, it won't stop the process, um. But I don't want to wait that long, though. I probably want to revisit this at, at our very next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So do we want to approve that contract just? For, uh, the sake of doing it?
I make a motion, we approve the CB, CBI consulting, uh, contract. In the amount of 69,500 and have the town administrator sign the contract.
Um, okay, that was a second, Lorraine.
Yes, second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Uh, the camera.
Fabian, I. Okay, is that everything, Ari, we need to do with this?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, I just don't want to miss anything.
No, we're good.
All right, um, next we have agenda item number 10, the Peach Barn, which is at Betty's Neck. We need an additional. Funding, is that correct?
Yes, let me, um, um, trying to get, get Mr. Hassett's attention here. Um, okay. So, um. We, we, we awarded, we, we, we awarded the, uh, the, the haunted house demolition, as you know, that one, that one, we had sufficient funding in the, in the project for. Um, for the Peach Barn roof, uh, we had sufficient funding for the base bid of $32,000, but there's an alternate. Um, which would, um, bring it up to $40,000 for the cost. It's only 33,787 available. The alternate would resurface, right Nate, would resurface the, uh, the, the plywood, under, plywood underlayer on the roof.
Yeah, it would add, uh, three eighths inch, uh, first EDX plywood over the entire, uh, roof area, um, extending the duration of the life of the new roof.
Right. So, um, trying to think of ways to fund that, um, we're short $6,213. And Mr. Hassett suggested, um, a, uh, an approach with a gift fund that he, that he, that he identified, which has a balance of $18,736. And 96 cents. Todd, you want to talk about the, the gift fund a little bit?
Uh, sure, um, the board has, um, a, a gift fund that is not earmarked for any purpose. Or, or acquisition and it's, it's got in excess of $18,000. Um, so we thought, um, the. This bid alternate, um, was really important to extend the useful life of the roof and, uh, for the 6,000 and change. Uh, we would just ask the board to consider using a portion of their discretionary $18,000 gift fund.
Okay.
Yeah. So that, that, that's we, the, um, so that, that's what we're asking the board for.
So it's not using the entire gift fund, it's just using the $6,213, correct?
Right, that's correct, that's correct.
Okay, um. Lorraine, Rich, anyone want to make a motion?
No, I, I agree with that, uh, decision because, uh, Nate and I have diggone and looked at the building there a number of times over the last year or so. And, um, there's no question that the, uh, uh, the, the plywood or whatever. Borders on those roofs need to be replaced. And this is one thing that we can secure this for a long, long period of time with the new. With the new roofing and, um, uh, plywood. So I, I would, I would recommend, I know Nate will recommend the same thing, so. Uh, you want them both at the same time, Ari, to approve these things? You want them separate?
Um, the, well, the, the award of the contracts doesn't require a board vote. You're welcome to do so if you like, um, but the, um. The, 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 the thing that we need the board to approve, though, is the, is the transfer from the, um. From the gift fund, yeah.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion to, uh, transfer $8,000 from.
6,213.
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
6,213.
6,213 from the gift fund. Um, the selectmen's gift fund or the town selectmen's gift fund, uh, to, um. Fund the plywood for the, um, Peach Barn.
Um, I'll step down and second. Any discussion?
We're just basically transferring $6,213 to the Betty's Neck gift fund, correct?
To the Betty's Neck project.
I just want to confirm that, okay.
For specifically for the Peach Barn, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Into the project, yeah.
Yeah, all right. All those in favor of that use of that $6,213?
Carboni, I.
Camera, I.
Maybe an I. All right, do we want to approve the contract? Or I think Ari can do that one, right?
Yeah, we've got that.
Okay. Okay, all right. Okay, so that's done, correct?
Yes, thank you.
All right, now we go to. Uh, number, thank you, Todd. Now we go to number 14, Director of Inspection Services, who happens to be you again, Nate. Um, so we want to, you're asking us to rescind Megan Morey's appointment as temporary emergency assistant public health nurse. And, um. Permit the appointment of Jennifer Pombo as temporary emergency assistant public health nurse. Do you want to speak at all to that for us?
Yeah, I mean, I can real quickly. So, um, as you remember, um, back in 2020, um, we appointed, um, uh, Megan Morey's. As the, um, temporary, uh, emergency public health nurse to help out with the contact tracing. Uh, our regular public health nurse, Lori Dusmaris, um, doing the service, uh, for multiple towns and, um, she was getting overwhelmed. Uh, Ed Cullen picks up a lot of the slack on it as time will allow, uh, but Megan is no longer available, uh, to do this. So, um, Lori highly recommended, um, Jennifer. Laurie highly recommended Jennifer Pombo, she's fifteen years as an LPN, has plenty of experience, has good availability. So I'd like to see if we can get her appointed and start immediately.
Okay. And then use, I, I mean, if, if we know that Megan can't do it anymore, then.
Rescind that.
Yeah, rescind that, okay. Lorraine, did you have a question?
No, I was going to make a motion, but that's okay.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
No, I just. Make a motion that we appoint. Jennifer Pombo as the Temporary Emergency Assistant Public Health Nurse at the current, as the current appointee. Oh, well, never mind, as the current appointee, Megan Morris is no longer able to perform the duties.
Okay, and rescind Megan Morais's appointment, which would have been.
Valid until.
Thirty first. And that means.
So that, all right, I can start over.
Let's do it, yeah.
Okay. I move that we. Appoint Jennifer Pombo as the Temporary Emergency Assistant Public Health Nurse with an expiration date of July thirty first, twenty twenty two. And accept Megan Morris's.
And rescind.
Rescind the appointment of Megan Morris. That would. That was valid through July thirty first, twenty twenty.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni.
And Fabian, I. All right. I think that's it for you, Nate. Is that true?
I spoke briefly with Selectman LaCamera on the affordable towing piece, I don't know if he wanted me to.
Okay.
Get around for that one or not.
Okay, which one was that?
Number nineteen.
Nineteen.
Okay. Let's do number nineteen then. I do appreciate you being here with us, I know that you'll be back at it at five thirty in the morning, so. Okay, number nineteen, we have a renewal. For. Affordable towing and auto repair at One Fern Avenue for a storage permit. You want to give us some information on this one? So this one says no more than sixteen vehicles registered or unregistered. Has, have you been out to see that one, Nate?
Yeah, I'm usually, I'm usually by there at least a couple of days a week because Fern Avenue is the back access to LaBarren. I've been working on this since twenty thirteen with the owners of the affordable towing. This originally started with a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals for a pre-existing non-conforming use. Tow truck driver was, ran, ran the, John, Jackie DiMauro rather, ran his wrecking company out of there. So there used to be a special permit associated with the use of that property. Back in twenty fifteen, the Zoning Board of Appeals decided they no longer needed that annual renewal on the special permit, so they took that off. So the Board of Selectmen annually renews a license for storage of sixteen vehicles on the property, registered or, or unregistered, so. Generally, it's well-kept, I don't receive any complaints about it. They do have a little bit of storage accumulating in the back that I need to stop in and just say, you know, keep an eye on it, keep it clean. We're keeping a, you know, close eye there and we don't want to get it out of control, so. I think that, you know, if the board were to entertain a renewal. I wouldn't mind if you had a condition on it that just says, you know, within the next six months, I'll update the board as to, you know, where, where the property stands.
Okay.
Selectman LaCamera, does that kind of encompass what we spoke about earlier?
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure that the. You know, it was mentioned here that you needed to, I'm not saying you couldn't have. Gained access to the fence area and the area, so I just want to make sure that they're in compliance. You know, with the storage of the sixteen vehicles, that's all I'm asking for, and so I don't have any problem with your recommendations.
Okay. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to. Renew the automobile storage permit for Affordable Towing and Auto Repair Incorporated at One Fern Avenue. Subject to an update within six months on the property by the building commissioner.
I moved.
And the new. Would be June seventh, twenty twenty two, sorry.
I was going to say, I'll second that.
All right.
Madam Chair, if I, real quick, that will, this is something Tracy actually got to me a while ago and it, and it did fall off my plate as far as responding to her. The actual expiration is June seventh of twenty twenty one anyway, so we're past the expiration, so. As long as we get right back on it in June, I, I would be satisfied that, that would coincide with the six-month piece.
Okay. All right, so do we have to change the date? June seventh, twenty twenty two would be the same, right? Okay. All right, so no change there, all right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Camera.
Fabian, I, all right. Let's see. I think, is that it now for Nate?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Nate. Thank you very much. All right, so number fifteen.
I want to consider fifteen and sixteen together, if you want to move things on, it's just a thought.
Yeah, let's, let's do that, so. In the past, we have allowed for the licenses to be extended on for package stores and restaurants for Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. I didn't know, we didn't do it last year because of COVID. I didn't know if any of the board members would like to do that this year. If so, if someone wants to make a motion.
There's two, excuse me, Madam Chair, there's two different ones, there's one's for restaurants and one's for package store.
And one's for package stores, yep.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to extend the closing hours for restaurants with liquor licenses on New Year's Eve only from. One to one thirty AM with all patrons out by two AM.
Okay, I'll, I'll second.
Second.
Okay, Lorraine, you second, any discussion? And all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Camera.
Fabian, I, okay, and number sixteen is similar for package stores for Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve.
The board hasn't done it in the past, and I don't see any reason to do it, I don't think it happened, I was going to make a difference. You know, so I, I would suggest that we leave it as it is, that's my opinion.
Okay, Lorraine, any?
No, we can keep it eleven o'clock, that's fine.
Okay, so. Yep, we will make no action on this, just leave it as is. On number sixteen. Now we have, so. Number seventeen, we have the license renewal fee for fifty eighty Scrooge Street doing business as Boston Tavern, so. I did ask to have this put on the agenda, just to make sure we are all aware that. I, due to a very long process, Boston Tavern just received their liquor license, so they just paid the fifteen hundred dollars. For pretty much four or five weeks that they'll be able to use it, so. I just wanted to make sure we all knew this and have the opportunity to give a discount or. Not charge them for next year. There's a lot of reasons why this license didn't happen the way it should have, I don't want to rehash that right now. But if anyone is, I, I would like to, us to do something for them, they're, they, they went in like gangbusters and they've been. Doing great over there, so. I would step down and make a motion that we waive the fee for twenty. Twenty-two liquor license for Boston Tavern. Anyone wants to second that or not?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yeah, the discussion is, is that, yeah, they. A lot of this wasn't their, their, their problem. What am I doing here? And. You know, they just got the license, which means that they paid fifteen hundred dollars for a license for four weeks. And I don't think that's right, I don't think it's something that was caused by them, and I think I agree that we should waive the fee.
Madam Chair, may I, how did this agenda item come to fruition for this meeting?
I was talking, well, I actually asked for it to be put on the agenda, I was talking to Tracy. I don't know when it was, and she's told me that the license had just come in and they had just picked it up, and I said to Tracy. Don't they just have to renew it again, and she said yes, so then I sat down and I asked Ari, you know. If, how much business we had for tonight, knowing it was a full agenda, I still felt it was important. Before we asked them to cough up another fifteen hundred bucks. So. That's where that came from.
Okay, no, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I'd just like to add too that. You know, we signed the agreement. You know, back in March of twenty ninth, twenty twenty one, and part of the agreement was that all licenses or. Yeah, all licenses would have been, you know, met and provided by. Whoever the vendor would be for this contract, so. Here it is, yeah, I understand that it took all this, this time, but. You know, and my understanding is that, you know, it was brought up to me by the town administrator that there might have been other waives. Waiver provisions provided in the past for something like this, and I was curious, I thought you were going to include that, Ari.
I was told that was the case, I don't know, I think you and I spoke on Wednesday, something like that, and I, I don't know that Tracy's had a chance to, to research that.
Yeah. Okay, because that would have been nice to have, but.
I understand, I understand.
I know, I know, last year, Lorraine, we actually. Reduced the actual amount of money we charged for liquor licenses. And Brian brought that up, and I, Rich, do you remember, was it half that we charged everyone because of COVID?
I don't remember what the number was, but it was a discounted to, to try to help out the local businesses during that period of time.
And I'm pretty sure we did that across the board to try to help out, you know, all the local businesses. So I don't know if maybe that's what was implied, that we've done these kinds of waivers before. So. You know, and I really, I really don't want to hash out, you know, again, what happened, but, you know, there were, there were. It wasn't just the town, it wasn't Boston, just Boston Tavern, it wasn't just the ABCC. It wasn't, you know, advice from council, there was. A lot that contributed to this license not getting done until just now, and I would choose not to, if anyone wants the history. Fine, but I mean. You know.
Well, I just don't, I mean, without getting into it, which clearly you don't want to, I'm just, I don't think that, you know. We should be waiving the fee when they were supposed to back in March twenty ninth, have a license. To sell alcohol. It's about the, it's about the process, it's not necessarily about, you know, who the vendor is, it's the process. You know, we entered into an agreement. With a vendor that stipulated that they would meet these requirements and, you know, to the state up until October, they weren't. You know, in compliance with the agreement.
Yeah, but it wasn't just them, I mean, you know, I, I don't want to throw anyone under the bus, but. There were mistakes made, including at the ABCC, they said that they were going to fast-track the application because they. Sat on it longer than they should have initially, so, you know, with, at the risk of not. Throwing our partners at the state under the bus, there was, you know, things that happened there. We had extensive conversations with town council before, I, I, I mean, I'm sure you recall that even when SEM was there, it was a complicated. License, they had to create two different companies, so this isn't the first time that this has been a complicated license for us to obtain, but. For us, for them to obtain. So. There was a lot that went into this, and it wasn't just Boston Tavern's fault that they didn't get their license until just recently, and as soon as that was ready, they came in, they cut us a check. And they did not ask us for this, this is something that I feel as though, you know. I would, I think we should do. So. Anything else? Do you want me to elaborate further? I mean.
No, I just, I just don't want to set a precedence here, because I, again, I don't know, you know, what drove it here, but. You know, we entered into an agreement back in March and. You know, for whatever reason. You know, they weren't in compliance with the. You know, with the agreement.
Right.
I'm going to speak up at this point, it was not Boston Tavern's fault. You know, it really was not their fault at all. Town Council gave us some direction, which was misinformation about what needed to be done and what needed to be included in the agreement, and Town Council was wrong. And then we started with the ABC, and the ABC, you know, gave the town a runaround, gave them a runaround, and so forth. In the meantime, during this period of time, they got no revenue. For any liquor license sales, Boston Tavern, okay, they had to hire an outside vendor to do it that had a liquor license. That was providing the service in order to accommodate, you know, the things that were going on. In the meantime, we get COVID nineteen going on, with people cancelling meetings, trying to reschedule, cancelling functions, trying to reschedule it and so forth. So. I don't think it's fair to them to be charged for four weeks for fifteen hundred dollars, when it was not their fault, I'm sorry.
Okay, well.
All the emails that had to do with, you know, Town Council and so forth and so on, and the ABC, there's dozens of those emails, you know, that wasn't handled properly, so.
Okay, well, just for purposes of this discussion, all I got was, you know. Just information that we were going to, you know, discuss waiving the fee with absolutely no backup information here. And you're asking me to, to vote to waive a fifteen hundred dollar license fee. But with no backup documentation, which I, I believe, Madam Chair, you do require. You know, information for discussion in these packets, and there was nothing else in here, so for that.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I know, I know that. I thought, Lorraine, that you were here for, since April, and a lot of this was going on even in April, some of the, and I thought so. And to be perfectly honest with you, this is one of the things that, you know, I'm sure Tracy will vouch for me, that we kept saying to her, as soon as that comes in, can you let me know, and she did, and. You know, as soon as she did, I'm like, geez, we're ready to collect next year's money from everyone, so. All right. Okay, all that being said, I will ask for the vote, all those in favor of waiving the fifteen hundred dollar fee for Boston Tavern? Rich?
The camera, I.
Fabian, I, Carboni?
Day.
Okay. I also thought, Lorraine, that you had asked for all that information too, on all the. What do you call it, the, when it, all the bid stuff that went out, so I thought you were more familiar with the whole, or else I would have.
I have, no, I have the packet, I just didn't understand why. You know, this was taking so long.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I really thought that you'd been in on voting on some of their stuff, because you came in to office in. To office in April and I thought that, you know, we've discussed all the alcohol stuff and the licensing, and I thought we've already gone over it.
Nope, I was asked to vote, I think it was twice, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, um, to approve one day liquor licenses, um. For Loom Pond Lodge for the events that were being held there.
Yep, and I thought we discussed that that was because they didn't have their license yet.
Didn't have their license.
Right, right, okay. All right, um, so next is number 18 and, um. So this is a request from Stuart and Rita Burnham to connect to Taunton Water for 95 Precinct Street. Um. I have to be honest, these water connections are not my expertise. I know, um, this one. I believe it's right in front of the DPW.
Like a catty corner from it, yeah.
Okay, um, so they're looking for a connection. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request, um, from Stuart and Rita Burnham to connect, um, to 95 Precinct Street to Taunton Water.
All right.
Can you have a motion with discussion and an amendment, please?
Okay, discussion?
First of all, the, um. The water line that they're talking about is five feet under the roadway. On, uh, Precinct Street. And, uh, we just finished that road. And, um, Frank's highway, uh. Director is recommending that we don't allow that road to be torn up and, and, uh, put in a, uh. Uh, to put it in if they can install it, you know, from the edge of the road, um, that's okay. But, um, you know, that road was just done and he doesn't want any trench in there.
I, I would note on the, um, I was conversation with Frank Saturday as well. I would note that on the application, it does state that a street opening permit's not required. So, um, maybe what you could do is, um, approve the request on the condition that. The, the street is not opened. It's not, there's not, yeah.
And, and that's okay, Ari, but these, uh, contractors, they, they don't pay attention. You know, and they don't get permits to, for road openings. The, uh, Columbia Gas was noted for it. You know, they just go and they repair and do whatever. So I think we ought to make sure that there's a condition here. That says that we're not going to allow them to open the road, you know, to install the water line.
Yeah, that's right, so.
Do you want to amend the motion, Rich?
Yeah, I amend the motion to, uh. To not allow them to open up the road to install the water line that, uh, they're gonna have, they're gonna install it, and they may have to, uh. You know, um, tunnel it. But it has to be reviewed and approved by the DPW director before the, before the work starts.
Okay. Um, I'll second that amendment. Any discussion?
Yep, just, um, you know, for future process, um, if the director of, um, Super, uh, of Public Works. Uh, has a recommendation against a, or in support of. You know, a request that's coming in front of this board, I would appreciate it if we have a letter so that it's just, doesn't become too ambiguous about what the decision is. So. If, just for the record, I would appreciate if we just got a letter, a blurb, whatever, coming from the. Department head. That's all.
Madam Chair, just to clarify that.
Yep.
Um, the problem that we have is that we have no asbills. And no plans for Taunton Water. We've requested it a number of times. I know Franklin and Nate have been trying to get that to know exactly where the location of the water lines are. And that's been a problem. And, um, so, um, we continue to try to do that. And, uh, when I saw this on the agenda, which was put on the agenda on. Wednesday, I think we got these packets, whatever.
It was on the agenda Tuesday in the draft.
Right, but, you know. Um, when I saw it on Wednesday, you know, that I, I called him and I said, I'm a little concerned about this. Where, where, where's the water line installed? So. Of course, with Thanksgiving weekend and everything, he did it today. So, um, he did what I asked him to do. And, um. So he, he has made a recommendation and I'm bringing the recommendation to the board.
Oh, okay. Um, so that is one of the new roads. Is that one of the roads that we just got the award for?
Well, it's beautiful. It's done. Wonderful.
I mean, honestly, I, I hate to see the road cut into because how often do we get to have really nice new roads around here? Not, not that often. So we have a motion to allow the water connection as long as the road will not be opened, correct? That's what the motion, the amendment says?
And with the approval of the DPW director.
Okay. Ari, are you good with managing this?
Yeah, and I'll take a little bit of a hit here. The, you know, quests like this should be going, running through the, um, the relevant departments before coming to you, and we'll make sure that happens from now on.
Okay.
I appreciate that, Ari.
Yep, okay. Um, well, to be perfectly honest, if that wasn't a new road, I can't see us having the same concerns. If it was a road that had. Cracks in it and.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, in this case, I need to have a process. That's the standardized process. So there needs to be an interagency review before they get to governance. And that, that, that's just something we need to be doing.
Okay, I, I have all the confidence you can do that. Um. I'm sure you and, you and Frank can put that together in less than an afternoon. Um, all right, so all those in favor of the motion with the amendment?
Camera, I.
Fabian, I.
I.
Okay, so that is approved. Uh. Now we have. Oh, I'm getting tired. Number 20. Discuss, oh, let's see here. We have the Herring Fishery Commission. I will entertain a motion to appoint. Thomas Baron from Lakeville. Oh, I'm sorry, to reappoint Thomas Baron from Lakeville. Brad Day from Middleborough. New appointment Bruce Chase from Middleborough for a three-year term ending September 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
Camera, I.
Carboni, I.
Fabian, I. Um, I will entertain a motion that, um. The following volunteer observers be appointed for a one-year term ending September 30th, 2022. Alan Fraley, Middleborough, Cynthia M. Gendron Wareham, Janet McCosland Rainham, Brian Holman, Middleborough, all four reappointment, and one new. Appointment Ronald Burgess from Middleborough.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Camera, I.
Baby and I. Okay, thank you for the summary on that, Tracy. We have a request to appoint William Orfanos to the Town Forest Committee. So I will. Entertain a motion to appoint William Orfanos to the vacancy on the Town Forest Committee, Committee. Term to expire July 31st, 2024.
I'm moved.
Second, this is great. We've been looking for somebody to serve on the Town Forest Committee for a long time. We appreciate that.
Yep, um, he's got a good letter here too. All those in, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
The camera, I.
Fabian, I. Uh, number 22. The open space currently has a vacant position. I will entertain a motion to appoint Gary Flaherty to fill the position. Term to expire July 31st, 2022.
So moved.
Second. Um, it's really, it's really great to see, um. His resume is terrific. He's got a lot of experience. You know, and, uh, this is a, a great addition to the Open Space Committee.
Yep, it's really nice to see different people coming forward. Honestly, I, I love that we're getting. Um, you know, different people. Um, all right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Camera, I.
Maybe an I. Okay, uh, we have next, um, the minutes of October 25th and November 8th. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Board of Selectmen minutes for October 25th, 2021 and November 8th, uh, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
The camera, I.
Baby and I. Uh, number 24, any new business? Any new business? Going once, going twice, gone. Uh, number 25. So under old business, we have, um, I don't want to forget to do this because I, I'm tired. Um, so I'm going to do the second thing on our list first. Um, and that is, I will entertain a motion to ratify our vote taken at the Board of Selectmen's meeting on November 8th regarding approval of request for an outdoor entertainment permit. Back Nine Club, November 13th.
I'm moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Camera, I.
Oh, Carboni, I, sorry.
Okay, I know, I'm moving fast. All right, um, under old business also, we have these proposed meeting dates. So, uh. We don't really need to vote on these, but December 13th will be our regular meeting, our next regular meeting. December 20th, we highlighted to be a meeting if we need to get caught up on any licenses that come in late or any other business. Uh, January 10th, regular meeting. January 24th, regular meeting, including a presentation from the town administrator on the proposed budget. We have the budget review meetings, 8th, 9th, and 10th. For I, I still three nights in a row, whatever. Um. February 14th, which is Valentine's Day. Does anyone have a problem with having a meeting on Valentine's Day? I don't. Okay.
All a bunch of funny daddies.
Yeah. Uh, all right, March 7th, regular meeting.
I'm gonna go back to, uh, I thought we were talking about potentially December 6th to have a meeting. Um, if we're not, then, uh, I, I don't want agendas of this size anymore.
Yeah.
Then do I, I'll second, I'll second that motion.
Yeah.
And this is ridiculous that we're spending three or four hours, you know, so I want a meeting either on December 6th or 13th or 20th, both.
Well, we didn't, um, we may need to, um, have a meeting next week. For some executive session business. So if that's the case, we'll try to put whatever we can on there. Ari.
No, but I mean, to, to have a meeting on December 13th, if that's what you want. Then we're gonna wait a month to have another meeting. That's just unacceptable. I'm sorry.
So can I, can I weigh in for a moment?
Yep.
So it is extremely challenging for us to turn around back-to-back meetings, like week to week. It, it's, it's just, it, you know, it's a process required to, you know, put, put together the, you know. Do drafts, do the draft, uh, agenda, get it approved, get signed off by the board, um, circulate, uh, posted, and then the packet together and so on and so on. You're basically talking about, you know, having staff take up, do nothing else for two straight weeks. And then if that, if that's, if that's what you want us to do, we can, but it slows other things down.
If, if I may, Madam Chair, I know that, um, what happens is, you know, information or potential agenda items come into the office. We make a list. It just goes on the blanket list. Chair typically will, you know, kind of look through it. Um, and to me, it wouldn't necessarily cause additional work. I mean, we, we do have the staff in the office now to be able to support it. So. I would just say that it's not like we're looking for agenda items. It would be taking what we already have. And what we would already schedule during that time and just divvy it up to two meetings.
Well, I mean, tonight's meeting was lengthy because, um. Well, first of all, I asked for the change in the schedule. So we would have had this meeting last week. A couple of these items wouldn't have even been on tonight's meeting.
So it would have been a very long meeting.
Yeah, it would have been a long meeting. Second of all, um, you know, we wanted to get the cable advisory done before the end of the year. Um, so, you, you know, but, um. I will definitely keep it in mind when we look at, when Ari and I look at the agenda, we usually. Look at it the Monday and then talk on the Tuesday, and that's when Tracy sends it out. Um, and if it's small things, we try to get it on the agenda so that way some of these small things don't have to wait two more weeks, but. I'd, I'd like us to stick with the schedule. I mean, I, I don't have a problem doing the December 20th. Um, if that makes, um, everyone feel better than.
The reason that's there is, is if we have things, we'll, we'll, we'll schedule. I'm just not convinced that we'll have things. Um, after the 13th and you're getting into 20th, starting to get into a slower period, but, but that, that's okay. If we have stuff, we'll, we'll put it on.
Yeah, and I mean, depending what it is, maybe we could, you know, have a meeting the last Monday of the month. Um, we've done that in the past too, so. Anyways. All right, so that didn't necessarily require a vote. Um, I think that was it. We did the, we did the, we ratified the other vote that was taken. So agenda item number 26, any other business? That can probably come before the Board of Selectmen. All right, I just want to thank everybody for being here tonight, all the staff that was here, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Promoted.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
The camera, I.
Fabian, I. All right, thank you, everyone.